So, okay, so we'll set you up on an MLS search. I think what we should do is probably do like, I don't know, three to five hundred, three hundred to five hundred page.
Trying to figure out which alternate to see. I don't need enough to, okay. Ready? Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the planning and zoning meeting. This is May sixth, two thousand and twenty one. We are semi in person. So we have with us today Commissioner Miller. And we also have with us Commissioner Wolman. And I see online zooming in is Ryan Rogan, Diane Jorsey. And we have alternates Steve Biella, we have Peter Zerobozo, and Andrew Legnani. I do not know if Tim Sigma is online, no. And I know that John Michael is not here. So we have two, and I'm missing one else. Oh, Brian Rogan is with us.
Brian's on.
Brian's on. All right, and the reason I'm doing this is I'm trying to figure out, let me see, as far as the alternates for the meeting. And so I will go with Steve Biella, Jr. And I will also go with Peter Zerobozo. But I'll ask Mr. Legnani to hang with us. And we'll see if we can use his services as well.
All right. Can I just add that for the items that are open for public hearing, you're gonna have to see whoever was at that meeting.
Um, yeah, okay.
And I'm thinking, sure. On those items.
Oh, yeah, exactly. So, all right, so moving on, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And it's currently seven oh seven in the evening. And so welcome, everyone. The first item of business is the approval of minutes. Now, we have upfront the fifteenth of April, two thousand and twenty one. And has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Do we have any corrections, adjustments? Hearing none, or anyone who wishes to make a motion regarding the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Wolman. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Further discussion, any other commissioners? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Or shall I ask if there's anyone opposed?
I'm abstaining. I was not present, Diane Jorsey.
All right. Thank you, Diane. All right, and also we have minutes that have been, have come in for the thirtieth of April. They're not on the agenda because they came in after the agenda was printed. And do we want to go ahead and add those to the agenda now for the thirtieth of April, which was our discussion meeting? We have a motion to add the agenda.
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Diane. This is strange because we're so split. We have a second to add the minutes.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Wolman. Is there further discussion? So all those in favor of adding the minutes onto the agenda? Aye?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay. Thank you. All right, so looking at the minutes for the thirtieth, were there any corrections? Hearing no corrections or adjustments to be made to the minutes, I will take a motion on the minutes for the thirtieth.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the special meeting of April thirtieth.
All right, thank you, Diane. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wolman. Further discussion, and all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Abstain, Commissioner Rogan.
All right.
Abstain, Commissioner Miller.
Okay. Um, do we have? Do we have enough?
I was gonna say, you may wanna just check on that. We had Zerobozo and Legnani as well as Sigma.
Okay. So Peter Zerobozo, you were in on the thirtieth of April. And is your vote to approve the minutes?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And Andrew Legnani, you were also there. Can I have a motion, can I have a thumbs up or thumbs down from you regarding those minutes on the thirtieth of April? You approve?
Madam Chair, vote in the affirmative.
Okay, thank you. And then we had, all right, so Mr. Wolman's here, myself, and Brian, were you here for the?
No, so that's, I'm sorry, this is Maureen speaking.
Yeah.
On the minutes, I have Chairman Bealley, Mr. Sigma, who is, I still think, still not joined the meeting. Steve Wolman, Peter Zerobozo, and Andrew Legnani.
Okay, so we have, okay.
Majority.
All right, so we got them, all right, so those, those minutes are approved. All right, so move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the scheduling of public hearings. We have a text amendment to the Berlin plan, Berlin zoning regulations, sections ten, to allow a permit approval period to align with statutory site plan and subdivision timeline of a related development approval. Is this more of a housekeeping issue, Maureen?
So you may remember back in March, we had a discussion that we found that that there's an inconsistency in the regulations with the timeline for the excavation permits and the subdivision permit and how long they're allowed to be approved by statute before they're begun. And they don't align with each other. So it causes a renewal each year for the excavation permit when the subdivision was approved with those elevations for the subdivision.
Talking about such fireworks.
No, no, no.
Sorry.
We talked about, so I don't have, so you don't have the language that will get distributed as soon as it's polished up.
Yeah, all right.
And then, and then, so we just wanna schedule the public hearing. It has to be finished and sent to the regional agency thirty days before the public hearing, which if we put it on what date did I suggest? I didn't suggest.
No, we didn't, we didn't suggest.
Look at that, I left off the suggested date.
Okay.
Let me look at my calendar for one second. That's on my calendar. So we're at the sixth, so if you put it on the June, or rather the
The next week.
Yeah, the June seventeenth, no, admit. I'm thinking June seventeenth, we can get it to the eighth of September.
Oh, okay.
Time to then have it.
Okay. I'll make a, I'll make a proposal to put the public hearing scheduled for June seventeenth.
Okay, thank you. We have the motion by Mr. Wolman. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I will second, okay.
Oh, Diane, you gotta be quick around my phone. You should be here, Diane. Mr. Miller, second. Okay. All right, so further discussions, and all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Is there anyone out there opposed? I mean, as far as the commission goes. Okay, moving on. New business?
If, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I do have another item, the two items in your packet. You also have the facade review for seven ninety seven Farmington Avenue on the former Ethan Stevens. And where it's at the end, I put it at the end of the packet, towards the end. And I was asked to see if that could be added to the agenda as we're working to get through the financing of the facade of things, the event to the end.
Okay, so is that adding onto our agenda?
So I was, I'm asking if you'd add that to the agenda.
Okay, and what would we add it up to?
Just under our commission business at the end.
Okay. Do we have a, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to add a facade review in the meeting of commission business for eight states.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wolman. Do we have a second? Turning to the video, do we have a second?
Commissioner Rogan, a second.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Brian. Further discussion, and all those in favor? Aye?
Aye. Right.
Aye.
Okay, any commissioners opposed? Okay, so, yes.
And then I have.
Maureen's really, she's piling it on me today.
That's why, that's why the week looks like it looks. A rediscussion of the Kokomo one sixty six Old Brickyard Lane CO request and update on the materials removed and remaining on site.
Okay, is that discussion gonna also be at the end under other business, or?
At your pleasure.
Uh, commissioners?
Just to.
Stick it at the end, says Mr. Wolman, that's his motion. And commissioners, we have a motion to look at the, yes.
A second?
Aye, and thank you. Further discussion, all of us in favor of adding it to the end of the agenda? Aye?
Aye.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, folks, okay. No one was opposed as far as the commission goes. All right, terrific. So on to the new business then, right? Which is the special event application of Keystone Novelties Distributions Distributors LLC to erect temporary tent for the sale of Connecticut State Legal Spark roller products at five twenty-two Berlin Turnpike property at fifty fifty dash fifty fifty-four Berlin Turnpike Associations LLC in the BT One Zone. All right. Okay, is there anyone who's addressing the commission regarding this application? Are they here a person, or are they zooming in?
I'm representing Keystone Novelties from Zoom here.
Okay, I'm sorry, and who is this? I'm just.
My, my name is Alex Mutzball, and I'm representing Keystone for the meeting here.
Okay, Alex, can you spell your last name? This is a little bit sharp, hold on.
Yes, that's actually it there, it's on the screen.
Oh, there you go. Oh, there you go.
Miss mouthful, I know, I apologize.
Okay, Miss Mott, okay, terrific, don't go, don't go, we'll just call you Alex from here on in, but we just wanted to make sure we had you spelling in the last name correct for our record, thank you. All right, so, um, is this something that's reoccurring, or can you tell us a little bit about it?
Yes, so this is basically going to be a, uh, pretty much a replica of the tent sale that we've done in previous years here at the location. Um, nothing is basically planned to change at all from our past layout, or I should say the twenty twenty layout, we'll be erecting a planned twenty by forty tent on the property again to do the sale. Um, the duration plans to be from June twenty-fourth through July fifth, and typically our hours are, uh, nine AM to nine PM. And then we, of course, do ask that, the few days before the fourth of July, leading up to, we ask for an extension as, uh, usually gets a little bit busier those few days prior. So we do ask to just stay open a little bit longer. Um, and as shown, we do have a layout that shows the inside of the tent, uh, there should have been an aerial view as well to show the position on the property and included would be, and I apologize, it's very hard to see that copy of it, it got a little dark, uh, during the, the process of going from color to black and white. Um, but we do have the, make sure that everything is, uh, set back properly, of course, there's no kind of regulation that we're stepping too close to the road or anything of the such. Um, and as well, we did include the inventory that will be, uh, for sale at the tent. Um, that would be the only change piece really this year in comparison to last year. Uh, and as shown on the map, we do have a storage container that will be on site as well as a portable toilet for the, uh, clerks to use at their leisure, and then a generator to provide power when, uh, the lights are needed in the evening hours and to charge the point of sale technology that our clerk uses. Um, but other than that, everything should be the same as before, uh, and if there's any kind of concern or questions, of course, I should find, pretty much be able to handle anything at this point.
Okay, thank you, commissioners, do we have any questions? This is a repeat application, I guess, estimate that it's happened, so.
And it's been here.
Yeah, they've been here before, so, all right, so do, uh, hearing no, uh, concerns from the commission, um, do we have a motion? Notion to make a motion?
Commissioner Rogan, I'll make the motion to approve the special event application of Keystone Novelties Distributors.
Okay, thank you Brian, do we have a second? Plus.
With staff comments?
Staff comments, of course.
With the staff comments.
With the staff comments, Brian?
With staff comments amended.
Okay, amended, okay, so we have the motion, do we have the second?
I will second.
Zerobo, second.
All right, Diane gets the second, further discussion on this, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Right.
Aye.
Tremendous.
Yeah. How did you know?
Is there any of my commissioners that are opposed?
Can I, should I read them all?
Um, yeah, you probably should, 'cause I'm not sure.
I think it's better on, um, applications regardless.
Okay.
You know, minutes are, you know, majority, but, uh, Chairman Bailey?
Aye.
Bert Miller?
Aye.
Brian Rogan?
Aye.
Steve Wallman?
Aye.
Tim Sigma, is not on yet, um, Diane Jorsey?
Aye.
Uh, Steve Viallo Junior?
Right.
Okay, terrific, thank you. Um, next up, it's gonna be a site plan amendment, application of two two four Berlin Turnpike LLC for modifications to the front and rear parking areas and rear access drive aisle at mixed-use developments, like, that's two two four to two two, to two by six, turnpike, and that be in the BTD or the PSP zone. Okay, and we have the applicant here, thank you.
You have, are you, excuse me, if I might, after a second, about what is this? Um, is, is that everything you submitted, or do you have anything?
I have a court.
Um, uh, yeah, I guess, try to put it.
Okay.
It's gonna be difficult for the commissioners at home to see, yeah, it's, it gets pointed that way and we'll just, um.
We can put it there.
Put it here regardless, and so that, um.
You'll have to be able to get it on the screen, right?
Oh, he can watch it on the screen.
Yeah.
Is it the same, is it the same plan?
I brought, I brought that color, I put some notes on it.
But is, is that the same thing that?
The same thing.
But it's, it's a little low, put some notes added to it, so, to explain things.
That's fine.
But I mean, the shift is a little over.
And then Commissioner Rick Miller should be able to see it on the screen, and that probably.
Yeah, well, I think both, actually, we'll all probably get the best view there. So that's fine, that's great.
Should've stayed, should've stayed at the office. Yeah?
Oh. Not working. Too dark, light.
That's too warm. Oh, yeah, that's a difference.
This is, yeah, so.
Yeah.
Um. Which one of these is next?
Let me just go through it quick, this, I, all I need for this was for an explanation, the set of plans you have, that's, that's people. Uh, that's two one, so that's.
Okay, so now instead, Adam brought the, the, um, distributed sheets, which should, which matched what we brought to the office, to the, to the meeting in person.
So, uh, good evening for the record, is there any coordinates up around, or?
I think that's.
No, and that picked up probably as best, best.
So, uh, good evening, good record, my name's Jim Cassidy, professional engineer and principal of the firm, L C, there's some Cassidy here tonight representing two two four Berlin Turnpike LLC. Uh, John Martini is with me here this evening, uh, the principal member of the LLC. Um, what we're here before you tonight is a modification to a site plan that you approved about two years ago. Um, the property in question, uh, is to land this to the north of the Accurate Dealership. Um, when Mr. Cady built the Accurate Dealership as part of mixed-use development, he also built the retail, uh, shopping center for, for Strickland. And, um, he subsequently acquired some additional property, came before you received the site plan approval, uh, with the visit engineer at that point uh, to construct another building to the north of that. Uh, if anyone's in mind, uh, the building is substantially completed at this point, the site work is substantially complete. Um, what we, what we're doing is at this point, we're at the point where we're actually ready to do paving of the site. In preparation for the paving, uh, we kind of went back and took a look at the site and kind of noticed areas of deficiencies and potential issues. So we're trying to get everything correct before we actually put pavement down. Um, so the plan that I had up originally, uh, was the original site plan, uh, that was approved as part of this project. Uh, if you could flip one page out. Um, what we submitted was a revised, uh, site plan, uh, the first, the first page is actually the hospital condition showing where they were today with buildings on the site. The second page is what we're proposing to do, uh, what I was hoping to do, and I was trying to do this at one time. I had colored up the plan. Basically taking the original, uh, and over, this microphone won't, or the camera won't pick it up correct. Camera won't pick this one up.
No, it's, it's only a part of it, so.
Okay.
I'll move my mouse on the screen.
Okay. Um, and turn it towards the commission, someone's sitting. Get an idea of what's on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
As long as I have a specific to the plan, I ain't wasting.
I can't get the microphone. Um, this is gonna be interesting.
You wanna stand in front of me?
Yeah.
You're welcome to stand in front of me, it's okay.
As long as the microphone will pick it up, I'll try to be, it's loud. So I did stick a blow up on the site plan that you got on the screen there. Um, and what I did is it could be original site, it's an overlay, but was originally approved. Uh, and basically, two areas, what's happening is, number one, uh, between the two buildings, um, there is presently an access driveway that's between the two buildings. It was proposed that that access drive would be eliminated, and there'd be parking spaces constructed across the face of those parking spaces. Uh, one of the issues comes up that this little peninsula, the building that comes out of the existing building, there's a door, uh, to the rear that's used for loading. Uh, I think it's Fresh Monkey in this space, it's a loading door, the driveway would end here, but there's no access to that loading door. In addition to, when you look at it, kind of makes sense to keep this driveway all the way around in that if you have delivery trucks that come to the back of this building, they have another way to get out rather than having very tight corners to get in and out, um, through this driveway configuration they had. In addition to, and I say more importantly, uh, as on the approved plans, um, they showed a dumpster location here. This dumpster was replacing the existing dumpster that's out front. The dumpster location is perpendicular to the curb line. A truck is never gonna be able to get in there, make a maneuver to pick up those dumpsters. So what we're proposing is to, as part of the reconfiguration of driveways, take these dumpsters, cut off the connection between the existing driveway and this driveway, put the dumpsters at the end of the driveway, so a refuge truck can come in straight into the dumpsters, pick them up back up, and then continue out through the main access driveway. Again, this is a twenty-four foot wide driveway, a dump truck, a refuge truck could never make that maneuver to actually pick up those dumpsters, it just didn't make sense, so, um, we figured that. Uh, the other thing that got reconfigured, uh, is when, as part of the state approval, there was some modifications to the driveway coming in, it comes down along the north side of the building. Uh, when I ran some turning maneuvers for a larger truck such as the W E sixty-five coming along the back of this, I keep finding that either the truck would ride up on the curb, make the maneuver, or clip the corner of the building. So what I'm looking to do is expand out the drive aisle in the back about three feet, that's all I'm looking to do to make it, make it actually work. Uh, so we're also looking at the parking spaces along the rear, on the original approved, they were at forty-five degrees. The drive aisle along the back of the building was eighteen feet wide. If for some reason a vehicle holds up longer back of the building, stops to, to drop somebody off, park, put something in the building, that driveway's blocked. We would like to take the parking spaces, make them perpendicular to that drive aisle, make it a twenty-eight foot wide drive aisle instead. So we're pushing this edge of the pavement out above ninety feet to accommodate all that, but it makes more of a realistic maneuvering of the, uh, the drive aisle in the back and the whole circulation in the back. It just was, it just was very tight in the back, it doesn't make a lot of sense. Um, other things to note, um, when you take a look at the, the connection of the front buildings, just presently, that's why I have some site photos here, there's a sidewalk, there's an existing sidewalk that's along this building, there's a nice landscape island in front of that sidewalk, some natural landscape island. With the plans that were originally approved, that all had to come out, and then a new sidewalk had to be put in, uh, across this area. There's about a four foot difference between this to that building, uh, so it's a pretty steep section of sidewalk that we're between the two. So it's steep a lot more natural, again, to leave that driveway there, leave that sidewalk, its location up against the building, leave all the landscaping. Uh, at the end of the day, if you take a look, that was originally approved for the landscaping plan, you'll find that there was just basically a couple of, uh, ornamental trees in the front. Uh, those ornamental trees can remain, the islands are still there, they're compatible with this configuration. More importantly, I know you took great effort in coming screening along this north side of the project. No, there's no effect on that screen, those trees can stay exactly where they are. Uh, the three feet, uh, that were standing in the back is ju- just eating up a little bit longer, but the, all the other trees that were originally approved all remain in place, nothing actually changes. You also had a series of deciduous trees along the back, the only thing that happened is they pushed back with the pavement, but they're all still in place, so nothing changes with landscaping other than this driveway between the two, uh, is, remains, uh, this originally was a water area, but again, I don't see how it would work because you have a delivery door, uh, this location here, the drive aisle too, for drop off anyways. There was also, uh, because of the change in grade between these two buildings, uh, as part of the construction process, they built a small retaining wall between the two. There's a transformer in this location, we can't relocate the transformer, it was up much higher. Again, it was a smaller portion, they built the retaining wall out of the same exact material that the building's built on. So it's a split base concrete block, retaining wall, same color as the building. As part of this patio that we're building out front, uh, we would like to basically extend the wall, taper it down to nothing, so it actually acts as a small retaining wall, but eventually at the end, it'd be a small seat wall, uh, as part of that patio. In addition to that, this area would become some type of restaurant, and it'd be some kind of outdoor gathering, or some area out there. That patio was approved as part of the original application. The only modification would be this little, people call it retain wall and seat wall, it'd be constructed along the base of that one. So basically, the building all remains the same, the landscaping would remain the same, it's just the overall configuration, pavement and circulation, uh, trying to make things work a little better, the big things, the dumpster, uh, access to the dumpster and also access to the loading area. Uh, I'll also note, um, on the overall site plan, uh, we were in excess of the number of parking spaces required. Uh, we're actually about, I believe it's about thirteen spaces over, we are reducing the parking spaces by about seven overall, so we'll still be in excess of the required parking, uh, for the current zone. They did note in the comments, uh, that there's a recommendation that if, like, there were ten use comes in, that a certificate of compliance would have to be filed, which obviously, oh, we'll take care of that as we attempt. But, yeah. Again, um, kind of at the point where we're trying to finish this up, and before we put Blacktop down and head back for your, your Blacktop out, we thought it'd make sense to talk to the commission about these modifications. So in a nutshell, that's basically what we're looking for modifications, I'll conclude my presentation, while you can see your questions today.
I'll turn to my question.
You know, just make a comment, just seems like, you know, the common sense approach to what they're doing and the safety issue for pedestrians walking, and even that retaining wall, I'll either make the building look nicer, and if they do put a patio, it's protecting them from that parking lot, so from my standpoint, it seems like all safety issues. I can applaud your credit for coming back, 'cause most people would've just died.
Yeah, well, that's true. That's true, any of my commissioners online have a, um, comment or question at this point? I'm, I'm seeing that no one has, I'm just gonna ask you to just review, and again, I don't, I, I just wanna make sure that I'm clear and I understand what the modification is to that driveway that goes between the two buildings.
So, existing, the driveway goes between the two buildings. As part of the plan you approved, they were going to cut off that driveway, and then put parking spaces across the front of it. And then, um, there would be a walk along those parking spaces, that walk involved removing all this vegetation, and removing the existing concrete walk along the face of the existing building. There's a significant change in grade of four feet from one to the other, okay? In addition to, uh, the reasons we're proposing to leave that driveway to exist. On the back side of the building, that, the back driveway was connecting, which needs to see driveway this location here, okay? We're eliminating that, it seemed to make more sense to take the dumpsters that are on the, that were proposed to be located along the existing driveway, can't get a truck into anyways.
Yeah.
Put them, so at the end of this, this turnout, or at the end of this truncated road to driveway, where you can drive a refuge truck in and take them off, and then you'll back out and pull out and make a realistic move.
And with those dumpsters that'd be screened to that new location, okay.
And then dumpsters, there's two dumpsters out in front of the building presently, existing today, they were coming out anyways, they're gonna continue to come out.
Okay. They weren't gonna be permanent, right?
No, they were never, but they were part, they were with the.
Let's get nervous.
They were, they were. They were part of the original building. The original building, yeah, but again, it just doesn't make sense to have, and so they're coming out, they go to the back of the building. This location is more conducive to the use of the new building, the existing building had dumpsters over this location, that truck would get into. Again, to be dumpsters to this building, it's a long walk, you can get a truck in, it's making sense.
All right, thank you for taking the time to sign that. Any other commissioners have any questions? Tim, thank you for joining us in person. Okay, do you have a, uh, any questions regarding this, uh, adjustments, modifications that are being proposed? Mr. Miller? Okay, Mr. Wallman, okay, all right, so, um, all right, seeing, um, so do we have a motion to? Maureen, yes, of course, I'm sorry, Maureen.
So I just wanted to note the, the comments that were distributed, but, um, and for those joining virtually, the engineering comments were received as no comment. And he agreed with the comments that are already made by staff.
Oh, that's good.
Those were distributed to those that are present at the meeting, and they'll be posted tomorrow. But those joining virtually don't have those.
Okay. I think we need a motion on this.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve site plan amendment, subject to staff comments, and if anyone comes up to be addressed with staff.
Okay, terrific, we have the motion by Mr. Wallman, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Wallman. Okay, uh, further discussion, and all those in favor, do you wanna do a roll call?
I would like to, thank you. Um, Chairman Bailey?
Aye.
Bert Miller?
Aye.
Brian Rogan?
Aye.
Steve Wallman?
Aye.
Um, I'm gonna skip Tim Sigma because, um, I believe Steve. I'm going to skip Tim Ziegler because I believe Steve was still seated in this item. So Diane Joycey?
Aye.
And Steve Biella Jr.?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
So now that Tim has joined, I will, well, let's see what the next item is. We have so many of our alternates sort of joining us on different levels, and I just want to make sure I'm fair to everyone. Let me look and see what we have. Next, we have a site plan for Kev Kay Properties LLC for ten thousand square foot office warehouse building to be subdivided into two to three units for rent at two thirty-nine Christian Lane in G I two zone. Because this is a new item, I'm going to ask, and we have Tim here, so I'm going to ask. Is, they can't just? Okay. You'll catch up on the next item. All right, so there's no shame. Okay. All right. So, all right. So do we have anyone from Kev Kay Properties?
Serena Griffo-Brando.
Yes, okay. One moment, please. I want to make sure.
Had to get a copy of the plan.
She had to reach for a copy of the plan. That's what caused for the delay. I'm sorry. And your first name again? I'm sorry.
Serena.
Serena. Okay. And your last name, please?
Griffo-Brando.
And can you just, do we have a spelling of it?
G R I F F O dash B R A N D A O.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Thanks. All right. So please go ahead and avail our undivided attention.
Sure. So this is our first presentation for a site plan and building plan for two thirty-nine Christian Lane, ten thousand square foot warehouse office space for which we are building for investment reasons. So it's going to be just pretty much a shell, a shell space, except for one tenant that we have that will be occupying, a stone and granite fabrication company will occupy half the building. And then, other than that, the other five thousand square feet will be up to rent for any other tenant that would be eligible for this zoning. And we were just looking for any questions, comments, recommendations as we present this for the first time. And we are also pending the closing for the property, for the lot, pending approval of the building plan.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Wilman.
And we realize that the, I'm sorry, that the engineer, just he's not able to join us today, but he asked me just to say that we realize that the drainage portion of the plan is not complete yet, and that will be, that is coming soon. But we just do not have that portion completed as per the comment that was just unsubmitted to us last Friday. So he did not have time to have that for the presentation today.
Thank you, Mr. Wilman. So Maureen, you're just asking us how we feel about the building?
Well.
If we're on the white track, basically, is what we're looking at. If we're on the right track.
Hang on a second, okay? Did you hang on one second? So, Maureen, they're just running something bias. So we like it because there's really nothing permitted, planned, I mean, presented, except a square building and who might need it.
So.
Oh, no.
Can you hold on a second? Please, Maureen, I'm talking to the town planner. Thank you.
So this is Maureen speaking. So they submitted this plan with the parking, the zoning statistics, the information, not the detailed plan, that because they don't own the building yet. So they are asking that the request is that you give site plan approval, conditioned on the drainage being worked out with, with engineering and staff and the utility connections as details of the plan. It's a substantially flat site, and discussions with the town engineer, he, I believe he put him in his comments, is, you know, that's fine with him because, you know, those are, those are technical details. The, however, you can also, in order for them to proceed with the sale, I guess, is why they're making this request. I'm not familiar with the, with closing issues and whatnot. But the, if not, it would be a preliminary approval of concept plan, and it wouldn't be a site plan approval. And you would deny it for not having those details. They have had the landscaping, the parking, the zoning statistics. The town engineer did, they've gone through all the departmental reviews. One of the reviews of the initial plan that came in was that the property was on, the development plan was almost flipped like a mirror image. So the driveway was at the north end of the site out onto Christian Lee. And, right, do I have it right from my back? Right, right. No, I'm the wrong one. Right, okay. It was at the south end. They have flipped it in the plans you received to the north end of the property as a result of engineering comments. And they have been rereviewed by engineering to meet the sight lines. So that's to meet the sight lines for the property. So.
To be normal to do this? You know, that's a very, that's a very valid question, Mr. Wilman. Because normally, I mean, if it's just the concept of putting a storage building there, I guess we could say this was, I believe it was a residence, at one point it was a non-conforming use. There was an issue, and now it's going to be conforming. The reason I have concern is because we have so many businesses in our area that have poured a lot into their buildings and their landscaping. We have the business that came in across the way, and I think they've done really, really nice jobs. I would like to see what this building is going to look like, or what kind of landscaping or what the facade is going to be like. I guess if there's, if they're trying, yeah, okay. Yeah, so I'm looking at that. And I guess the front elevation has, there's, the thing that strikes me is there's no windows in this place. I don't see any lighting.
Facing the road end?
That's the front elevation. So it's literally a box with four doors. I have no lighting. I don't know where the ventilation's going to be, the mechanicals are going to be. I don't see any landscaping. I don't see any, I don't see any natural light element. Now, you can say that if it's going to be a warehouse or whatever, but still you have to have a natural light element. Even if it's just a strip of windows that go right across the top, near the top, it's just sort of, you know, are rectangle windows as opposed to up and down double humps. I mean, something to allow for natural light. Again, there's, I don't know where the parking's going to be. I know you're saying storage, but somebody's got to drive in there and open up the door, and if it's going to be accessible at night, how's it going to be lit? And there's a lot to be considered because a lot of these businesses have poured a lot into the outside sands and also their landscaping and they're taking pretty pride in it. And I just, I just want to make sure that whatever is going to be going in there, I think it's going to need a little bit more thorough review from the commission rather than, you know, a box with four doors on it. But that's, I mean, so if we're looking for the go-ahead, I think in concept, it's probably a valid idea for the area. But I'd just like to see more. Yes, Maureen?
So this is a site plan application, and I, at your pleasure, and the, and the, and whether the applicant feels they can produce this. But if they can get the details for the next meeting, you have sixty-five days in which to decide a site plan application. So from April first, you have sixty-five days. I didn't do that calculation. Actually, it wouldn't be April first, from April fifteenth. Your last meeting was April fifteenth. So you have plenty of time to make a decision on this application. And they, you can request they come back with a more detailed plan at a subsequent meeting before you decide to act or not act, or what have you. That's an option.
Okay. I don't know. How does the rest of the commission feel about this?
I see you could say it's substantial. You know, it's a good idea for these properties. It's, concept, concept's okay, but I can't give a site plan approval.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Tim. Anyone else? Anyone in virtual land over there? Commissioners, George.
Commissioner George.
Yes.
I agree with the points that you've made, Chairman, and I think that more detail is necessary. Just wanted to state my agreement with you.
Yeah. All right. So, Maureen, how would be the best procedure to, sorry?
Yeah.
Say, let's continue this discussion. And will we discuss it? Will we continue it to the next meeting in May?
That's your decision. If you want to continue it, or you want, or you. I think that procedurally, that's the best way to go, is to continue it, and then you don't have.
Yeah, okay. So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to continue the discussion for our next scheduled meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a second.
Second.
Wilman. All righty, further discussion on that? So, so all those in favor are continuing. Aye?
Aye.
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 All right. Was there anyone opposed from the commission? Okay, fine. So great. We'll see you the next week.
Give them enough time. I mean, that's two weeks, right?
Well, I think that would be up to them. I mean, they could always come back and say, we're not ready. Can we ask to be continued in advance? I mean, right, Maureen?
Yeah, they can actually, if they don't have it, it can be continued until you are close to that sixty-five. Whatever meeting is just prior to the sixty-five days is when the commission would have to act on it.
Yeah, so we could. All right. So, all right, moving on. We're going to go into the public hearings then. These are all continued. So the first one is a proposed amendment to the Berlin zoning regulations of Timothy Sullivan Esquire for new section of six G three double E gasoline filling station. This was originally on March eighteenth, and then we also continued through April fifteenth. And here we are at May sixth. All right, and Mr. Ziegler will be seated, so let's see, who can we ask to step down? We'll ask Mr. Zarabozo to step down. And that would leave the alternate Andrew Legnani still with you.
Chairman Veale? I'm just looking back to see who was seated.
Oh, that's.
Already.
Yeah.
So this is the gasoline stations, I'm sorry.
Yeah, gasoline stations.
Okay. We had seated at the last meeting. Commissioner Biella had been seated at the first meeting, was seated, and Commissioner Zarabozo was seated and will be seated and.
All right, so they were seated on that.
Yeah, that's what it says.
All right, so those two were on the gasoline. So those were on the gasoline filling station, right? All right, so.
Chairman Veale?
Yes.
I intend to step down for discussion on both of the next two items because I was not present at that meeting and I have not heard the recording.
Okay, all right. So now, I'm sorry, Tim. Yes, so we'll leave them seated, those two. So that would be Zarabozo and Legnani. Okay. Now, she was, I think I just need to make every round to the commission, so I don't have to, this is, this is very stressful. I'm chumbling all these people. I know. All right. Well, well, yes, of course. Then I can hear you better. Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Sullivan. All right. So where are we in this?
Good evening. Attorney Timothy Sullivan on behalf of the law firm, Wisconsin Sullivan. Appreciate the opportunity tonight. I think I could do briefly recap and distribute something. As has been discussed at length during the three eighteen and four eighteen public hearings, my client is proposing a very limited exception to section Roman twelve R twelve A of the zoning regulations. This section prohibits a gas station, gas filling station from being located within fifteen hundred feet of another gas filling station. The proposed text change, a new section six G three E E, will put the town at the forefront of the evolution of motor vehicle fueling stations and convenience stores. It specifically recognizes that fueling stations no longer are limited to gas and that the length of time it takes to electrically charge a vehicle, thirty minutes to potentially sixty minutes, requires an accessory convenience store structure large enough to provide services and amenities to accommodate longer stays. Previously, I provided exhibits which were reviewed showing the new age convenience store. I don't know if we could scroll through those, and you don't have to. You know, providing fresh foods, made-to-order food, sitting areas, spacing, which is very important today given the pandemics, outdoor seating, pet relief areas. There has been discussion about the fifteen hundred foot prohibition stifling competition and the impediments to economic growth, a sentiment expressed by Economic Development Director Chris Edge. The evolution of the convenience store that supports a gas station has been profound in a number of ways, and none more so than the size. This is the driving force in this proposed text change. To take advantage of the exception to the fifteen hundred foot prohibition, the store must be at least five thousand square feet. This would represent a significant investment by a developer which is encouraged by the plan of conservation and development and the Berlin Turnpike Design Guidelines. It would enhance the visual and functional qualities to create an aesthetically pleasing appearance. There would be no concern that too many five thousand square foot P D U stores would overrun the Berlin Turnpike. The level, the level of investment alone would limit this. Unlike the concern for smaller gas stations popping up everywhere, the scale of the development would promote investment and quality design. There was some discussion about the appropriate minimum size of the C store, between thirty-five and five thousand, between thirty-five hundred and five thousand square feet. At the April fifteenth public hearing, comments suggested that five thousand square feet was appropriate, given the length of time it will take to electrically charge a vehicle thirty to sixty minutes. And the C store amenities necessary to accommodate such longer stays demanding larger stores. Towards the end of the four fifteen public hearing, the commission was looking to close the public hearing, and public comment raised an issue that the text change could make existing gas filling stations and currently proposed gas filling stations in the B T one zone illegal or non-conforming if the station was less than five thousand square feet. That certainly was not the intent, and in recognition of that concern, a revised proposal was submitted, which was distributed to the commissioners with their packets. Upon further review, I want to further tweak that proposal, and I provided staff with a further tweak of that proposal. I have have some copies here.
And is what is being displayed on the screen is what Attorney Sullivan shared with staff earlier.
This revised proposal clearly protects any existing or proposed gas station in the B T one zone, which is less than five thousand square feet. Just to read from it, they made a couple of changes to the original proposal. The first is that, and this was part of the discussion we had at the last, at the last public hearing, we redefine and re-characterize it as a motor vehicle fueling station. I start off by saying, notwithstanding the provisions of sections twelve R twelve A and C in the B T one zone only, motor vehicle fueling stations for gasoline, electric, natural gas, or other alternative fuels characterizes motor vehicle fueling station, excluding any repair serviced by a principal building containing principal. characterizes motor vehicle fueling station, excluding any repair serviced by a principal building containing a principal tank occupying not less than five thousand square feet, designed and permitted to monitor the facility, service customers, and sell merchandise may be allowed by special permit. And I put in a specific purpose section, the purpose of this section is to establish an exception to the fifteen foot, fifteen hundred foot prohibition for gasoline filling stations set for the in section twelve R twelve A, and specifically does not otherwise affect the application or interpretation of sections twelve R twelve A and C. So it clearly protects the existing gas stations, already getting, already proposed gas station. It clearly just cuts an exception. If you're gonna construct a five thousand square foot gas station, or a five thousand square foot fuel store in the BT one zone with two acres, then you would not be limited by the fifteen hundred foot prohibition. That's all this does.
I have a question for you, Attorney Sullivan. So what's the minimum acreage?
Two acres.
Two acres.
And that's that little asterisk, under that section, under section six G three of the regulations, you have that little asterisk there, and what knows that, there's a two acre minimum in that section for properties to have regulations to have that designation of the asterisk in the regulations. It requires a two acre minimum. That's the only, in a BT one zone, five thousand square feet on two acres, it not prohibited by that fifteen hundred foot separation. There's no other effect on existing proposed gasoline stations, no matter what the size of those gasoline stations, as it's less than five thousand square. And that was, that was the purpose of adding the notwithstanding the provisions, and then the purpose of this section is to establish an exception for the fifteen hundred foot, only that, for this, for this proposal. And as I stated, the revised proposal also characterizes the station as a motor vehicle fueling station, all types of fuel. And we also cleaned up the CCD two reference, which was in some paragraph from III, which previously had a CCD two reference instead of the BT one, because most of this was carried over, most of this proposed tax was carried over from the CCD two exception, commonly known as the Stappel Shop exception. As emphasized throughout the public hearings, this proposal would put the town at the cutting edge of fueling convenience store evolution. Development under this proposed regulation would require significant investment in town and add gashay to the Berlin Turnpike and serve as a magnet to stimulate further development along the Berlin Turnpike. If you'd entertain any, I don't entertain any questions, we discussed this last three public hearings. I think this, these changes clearly protect any development less than five thousand square feet. There are no more concerns, and I think that's the purpose of the public hearing. The other, I acknowledge that the other, the, the original proposal, I think, was, could, could potentially have caused an issue in the, in the wording, and that's the purpose of the public hearing, to get, it flushes that out. And I think we've, I think I've addressed it here, I think it's clear now that it would not affect any existing proposal or existing gas station. It is a clear exception. If you go to five thousand square foot facility in a BT one zone, and you have two acres, then you would not be subject to the fifteen hundred foot prohibition. That's all this does.
I have a question, if I may. This is going to. Trying to find where the wording is here. Things like vehicles or something. Oh, I guess it was under a limit. Facility shot designed to service motor vehicles with a whole wheelbase greater than thirty feet length. What, what is, what is that? Does that sound like thirty feet length is the wheelbase? So what sort of vehicles are we talking?
Size RV.
Okay.
And that, and that provision was extracted from the CCD two exception to the to the fifteen hundred foot prohibition, Stappel Shop, Stappel Shop exception. It prevents large vehicles from entering the, entering the facility.
Okay, so the largest would be, as Commissioner Miller had noted, an RV?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Miller, I'm, I'm not sure that would accommodate a Class A RV though.
It may not, I'm not.
It would probably accommodate a Class C, but probably not a Class A. Excluded Class A in the Berlin Turnpike, or doesn't make a lot of sense, but.
I, I, I'm not sure that I understand.
Classes are like the big bus ones.
Oh, yeah, so Mr. Sigma.
The real fancy one.
Oh, yeah.
Class C RVs are built on a truck chassis, like a.
Okay, all right. Mr. Edge, I believe that the Economic Development wants to address the commissioners at court, Chris.
Yes. I apologize.
Wake up, Chris.
I'm, I'm here, sorry. Give me one second if you would.
Okay, well, then we'll continue on and just let us know, okay?
Yeah, yeah, I just, I need to get my speakers organized. Give me one minute.
Okay. Did you?
I'm all set.
Did you ask?
I agree with the commissioner that.
Miller, yeah.
That, you know, seeing that it's gonna be a bigger facility, five thousand square foot facility.
That is a huge thing, isn't it?
And it's gonna probably attract the larger RVs and stuff, which is a Class A. And if you do allow that, then you need designated parking for them.
Yeah, especially if they're gonna be there between thirty minutes and one hour.
You know, and if it's gonna be food facilities inside of the. Then maybe it's going to be a large vehicle like that.
But I don't think we currently, anything designate that, you know, you have to have parking for an RV. Location to sites of the Berlin Turnpike, so why would we have to designate a site?
Well, I think, I think it's because it's being entertained that if it's a charging station, testimonies have provided that thirty minutes and one hour. So, okay, so you have an RV that needs to be recharged, I was waiting to answer, so it pulls in, it's gonna be there maybe for a whole hour. So.
I'm, I'm the same, currently, we don't, we don't make anybody do a certain thing. So, so if an RV wants to pull into any gas station on the turnpike, we don't make that. But so what you were saying is we want to designate a certain spot for RVs because they should.
Well, it, well, no, what I'm, what I'm, I guess what I'm concerned about is that we're no longer talking about filling up the tank and getting in the car and driving. We're talking about them sitting there and waiting between thirty minutes and one hour to get a recharge or a significant charge to continue on the trip, so. Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure how you would deal with that.
Can we, let me just, I mean, you know, a lot of this is, you know, maybe more legal than what I'm used to, but. So, Tim, if, if this, you're doing this for a specific client, this moves forward, are they going to be putting it there?
Yes.
And so, so then, I think what would happen is designate a spot for the RVs and designate spots for the cars, right? Because then we'll cover the, what we just talked about, if you're gonna put the charges.
I think that would be a subject.
Okay. Yeah, now I get it, yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
It would be a site plan review process.
Okay, I get it now, I wasn't.
But I'm, I'm just thinking that, and this, this word says thirty feet.
I agree.
Probably should be forty, forty-five.
I don't think Tim cares if you change that.
Yeah. I'm gonna, I'm gonna circle on back and see if Mr. Mr. Edge is with us. Mr. Chris, did you?
Yes, I, I am, yes, thank you, thank you, Chairwoman. So, yes, I just wanna make a quick, quick something if I could. The Economic Development Commission did not make a recommendation on this tax amendment, but I do not wish to leave this commission with no feedback from Economic Development at all. I believe this tax amendment has both the positive and negative side. If approved, the positive is that a barrier to entry will disappear for fueling stations. The negative is that it will bring more competition to the Berlin Turnpike, which may bring down prices, change the visual persona of the turnpike, but may also cause some hardship to existing stations. The new model is not just larger, but will encompass electric, natural gas, and will include other new technologies that may be soon coming our way. These new products are much more than gas pumps and coffee. They're moving towards offering limited grocery store items and being more than just a basic convenience store location. I believe that new players will likely come into the marketplace with the passage of this tax amendment, and there have been a few parties which have been looking at Berlin for this type of investment. So just wanted to kind of give you that. I don't have a for or against, but just a quick statement from myself. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Other commissioners, those joining us online, do you have any comments or questions for the applicant this time?
Commissioner Miller, I guess I had a couple of in picking things, I guess. One, one is, if, if, going back to the RVs or whatever and the thirty foot limit, I would, I would up the thirty limit, I mean. RVs are about thirty-three feet, some get to thirty-four, thirty-six feet. Fifth wheels are thirty, thirty-four, thirty-six feet, so you can move it to like thirty-six or to forty feet to accommodate those. And I'm not worried about the parking aspect of it, I'm just worried about the word in here would actually prohibit you from servicing an RV. Like you're breaking the rules, I believe, I don't think that's what we're gonna do. Just a couple of other minor things in section three, you mentioned fuel pumps. Pumps kind of signifies gasoline, might want to say fueling stations instead of fuel pumps. And I, I don't know the answer to this next one, I'm for, you say storage tanks for gasoline or other motor vehicle fuels shall be located underground. Regarding to other motor vehicle fuels, are we putting up a, a criteria that really can't be met? I don't know, are propane, are, is natural gas or propane typically an underground tank, is it? Okay, would hydrogen be the same if it came to being?
I don't know.
I don't either, so that's just a comment.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I, yeah, I agree that, I mean, this might be something that's coming down the pike, if so to speak, with the different alternatives. I, I question whether or not, with the, with the size of the building being five thousand square feet, with traffic, parking, I'm really wondering if two acres is gonna do it.
It should.
I don't know, my.
Two acres is a big piece.
That's like eighty-five thousand square feet.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, I, I, I just, I, I know, I'm just trying to think of, you know, if you do have an RV that comes in and you have other cars for being charged and you're not just shopping and.
I would take just that, a little crack and barrel, but they're, they're five thousand square foot, and they're not on more two acres land, they have less parking and everything else.
Two acres is a big piece. If you look at, you know, my building on the corner there, that's forty-two hundred square feet, and, and I'm on a posted stamp with thirteen parking spots, so two acres is a big piece.
Are you saying that we have to look at that building now?
Uh, no, 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 I'm just saying, it's.
It's a non-conformity.
Yeah.
Thank you. It's, I think two, two acres is a big piece for a five thousand square foot building, even with all this.
I, I'm, I don't know, I, I go back and forth on this, and I'm gonna tell you, my angst about this is that I'm always hoping that we're gonna get the best use of the property. And I'm always hoping that we're gonna be able to attract good competitive businesses and not so much about fueling stations or grocery stores, I'm just always hoping for something else to wanna come down the pike. And then I'm always, you know, hoping that we're gonna draw more, you know, variety of businesses, I guess.
I think this would be a magnet for that, this fueling, fueling station, a magnet for businesses.
The Northeast has been behind on this kind of idea, and you go to southern states and then this is just a normal thing down there, you know, all kiosk type foods and everything else and go in and play. You know, I think we're just getting up to the time, it is.
Yeah, I, I hate to be silly a lot here, but we're talking about, you were talking about alternative, alternative fuels, okay? Or what different resources, so we have gasoline, which is the regular, I know about the electric. But now you're saying natural gas cars, you're saying propane cars, and I.
Natural gas, this is Commissioner Miller, natural gas vehicles are already existent. I mean, CNG uses them all over the place, there's, there's a lot of natural gas vehicles that are in practice today, they're buses, whatever. You don't see them really, you don't see them too much from a, from a residential person type of thing because the fueling stations aren't there, and, and they may never come to be because of electric. There, there are also commercial hydrogen vehicles that are being produced today. It's still a long way, I think, to that technology, we into fair market share, everybody seems to be investing in, but why limit ourselves? You know, there, there probably would be pretty expensive infrastructure investments for them to put those in. I would see the EV thing being the first thing. In fact, most of these EV or electric car vendors, especially like Tesla, they're going out giving their stations away, basically, because they want to sell cars.
Yeah.
And they're partnering with one of the major parking garage firms in Connecticut right now. They're giving them so many free Tesla EV charging stations because Tesla is, is a, is an oddity when we got that. They have the best, probably the best technology, but they also have a proprietary system.
Yeah.
Theirs doesn't work with anybody else's, so they're giving all, away all these Tesla stations so that there's a massive amount of them, so when you go to say, okay, where are all the charging stations? Oh, that's Tesla, so you're gonna go out and buy a Tesla before you're gonna go buy a Chevy Bold or whatever. States are in discussion with five thousand charging stations around the state, or free to promote, like a car, right? You know?
Yeah.
Kind of puts us ahead of the game in New England, I agree with Tim.
I think it should say diesel.
We gotta have diesel.
It'll be interesting to see how the state would regulate a mixture of all these different fuels in one location. And I mean, I'm sure that there's gonna be some sort of safety issues, and I'm not sure if we, do we go.
That's above our pay grade.
Well, I know, but I, but I'm thinking about it, it's obviously something that the fire marshal is gonna have to deal with. Yeah, well, yeah, it's gonna be, I don't think it's a big issue, all right.
I'm sure, I'm sure they have the regulations go ready, just put them in place and site like that.
Any other questions from the commissioners that's online? I see Diane there, I see Brian there. Any other comments or questions? I'm not hearing any. So, Maureen, yes?
So I was just twirling my brain as that conversation was happening and wonder if something along the lines for that small Roman numeral four about the storage tanks could be reworded, "Storage tanks for gasoline or other motor vehicle fuels shall be located underground when allowed by pertinent local and state codes and regulations and as otherwise in compliance with those regulations."
I agree. All this language was taken out of the CCD two, so it's just probably organic.
Does everyone know that they hear me?
Oh, yeah.
I'm worried about them, so.
Did everyone hear all its comments?
Yeah.
Um, I'm not sure, I have a question.
Make a motion approved with the changes.
Can we have public comment? Isn't the public able to comment?
Okay, yeah, no, okay, I'm sorry, sorry, yes, is there somebody who would like to address the commission regarding the public hearing? Yes, sir, please.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm Peter DiAddio from Commercial Services Realty, also a managing member of BT two thousand eight LLC. We were fortunate enough at the ZBA to get our location permit for a new gas station and fueling station as part of our mixed. for a new gas station and fueling station as part of our mixed-use project within the 1,500 feet. And my concern that I think we're, we might be overlooking a little bit is that in that approval that we received, our building's not 5,000 square feet. It's 4,350 square feet. And, but we're limited from the current zoning regulation to only have 2,000 square feet of retail within that 4,300 square foot building. And it seems strange to me that this text change is now allowing 5,000 square feet to be all retail. And my concern is that, again, perhaps it's, I'm not trying to get an edge on competition, but now I built a building, you know, 600 square feet bigger. I, we get to do retail in it? Is that what I'm reading and what I'm seeing? It was brought up that, that the last public hearing, they actually used my property as an example and I caught it. And so I'm concerned that, you know, this text change allows the larger building to have more retail or office off, offer more products. And our particular building is, you know, right off of the red light, right off of the Berlin Turnpike. And it also serves as a convenience store for a neighborhood of 200 apartments. And our tenant, who, you know, has quite a few gas stations, would love to be able to do additional retail. However, it's limited in its approval because I believe your regulation limits it. So I question, how will that be addressed?
Well, anything that you'd like to? Would you care a comment on that, Maureen?
I, from, from the procedural and staff standpoint, you know, just the procedural standpoint. Regulations are proposed and projects come in, in the order they come in and any, you know, that, any single concern of one developer, there, they can apply for text changes and, and such in order to fit their needs. This, the timing of these two is, is odd, to say the least, that they are in such close timing to each other. But there was, you know, Attorney Sullivan and his project have the right to come in for a text amendment change. This project, the mixed-use project came in shortly before that.
October, actually, October 2019.
Okay.
It's, I just want to say. You know, so we can't foresee what's going to come next when we get in an application, nor can that applicant that applies under the regulations as they exist. And it's part of the process that regulations are allowed to be proposed, to be amended and are then, you know, the commission then makes determinations if those text amendments moving forward are appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know, was that clear? I feel like I'm walking in circles right now. I haven't eaten today.
Right, yeah, Mr. Sullivan.
And I think part of the development industry is to try to foresee where development is going.
Sure.
Any, any development prior to this, right, developer, as Mr. Diaddio, could have proposed a text change for his project as well. Maybe he, he perhaps doesn't think the industry is moving in this direction. I don't know. But this is clearly the direction that the industry is moving. And I don't think Berlin needs to be behind the times and should, should engage and, and adopt the direction that this, that this industry is going and not remain steadfast in its existing core.
Again, I, I guess my comment is not to be negative. My comment is to be constructive and, and advancement. In other words, the point is, is that if the, if the text change is going to allow additional retail, which it should, because Attorney Sullivan is correct, the new facilities are larger. Our facility is, is a substantial large facility. It's not 5,000 feet, but it's 4,350. And it's anticipated to supply an abundance of retail and an abundance of stops. And it, it certainly could have alternative fuel if it chose to, if our operator chose to, if there was a market large enough to do that. And we have a number of parking spaces. But the point I'm making is that, that since we're considering the text change, wouldn't it be appropriate to allow that, that text change to be utilized by a smaller footprint of 4,350 square feet rather than 5,000?
I think that at the beginning of this proposal, and I'm looking for my notes. Attorney Sullivan, you said, Attorney Sullivan, you said originally that when we were having the last discussion, there was a comment about possibly 3,500 square feet to a maximum of 5,000. Was that not?
No, ours was always a minimum.
Yours was a?
Originally it was a minimum of 5,000. There was some discussion during the public hearing about possibly reducing that to a minimum of 3,500, which we didn't oppose. But further discussion flushed out that, and I believe it was Commissioner Miller, excuse me.
That's okay.
I have a lot of bad allergies.
No, I know, everyone's fighting them.
Commissioner Miller suggested that the 3,500. And then he came back in the next hearing and said he thought more about it and really go bigger, go home because.
Why, I do recall you saying that as well.
Because, because of the amount of time that it was going to take to recharge a vehicle, that it was going to have more and more people waiting down the periods of time, which needed a large structure.
Nothing stopping for any developer to come in like Maureen said, to a site plan amendment. If you got approval for 4,300 and you want to come in with a site plan amendment to 5,000, with the text change, if you want to do that, there's nothing to stop the goal of doing that.
That's true.
So, so, you know, that, that, that is there to address.
And actually, we have the plan of conservation development that we're going to be taking on and starting that process. And sometimes I think with those sounds with text amendments or whatever, we might even be, it'll be appropriate to look at that overall to see what sort of impact, because we're going to have to start looking at this 10-year plan.
So this is Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
So to, I guess, explain a little bit my thought process at a time. What, what I didn't want to see happening, and, and I thought maybe 3,500 was just a little bit too small, is a proliferation of gas stations and Dunkin' Donuts.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's unfair.
You know, that, and you see a lot of them cropping up right now. I don't see how that meets the objective here of the next generation. And I was just concerned that if we waive the, you know, the 1,500-foot thing for whatever, to Mr. Diaddio's point, I'm more here from the 1,500-foot prohibition and, and trying to solve that, that issue. I don't really have the issue with, you know, Mr. Diaddio had a 4,3000 and, and I don't, I don't, it just has that size. I don't see where we need to limit what he can sell in there. That's not my objective. My objective was like, if you're gonna, if you're gonna eliminate this 15, 1,500-foot prohibition, then make sure it's a next generation. As Attorney said, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna have to put a sizable investment in it and you're not going to make that sizable investment. So I, I was looking at it from that perspective. But the point, you may want to go back and, and, and look at that 2,000-square-foot limitation. You know, that's probably a little bit archaic in this day and age.
Yeah. And your point is, is very well taken. I mean, after all, it's the 1,500 foot that were, that's really the.
Driver.
Yeah, exactly. That's the driver. So I guess that really boils it right down. I mean, what happens above and beyond that is, you know, here, here we are. We're at the crossroad. So I don't know how, which way the commission wants to go with it. I mean, I understand why the 1,500 rule was there. I, to Mr. Miller's point, I hate to see this prolific, you know, of the same gas station, Dunkin' Donuts and everything else coming in. And just hoping for a different variety. So, but anyway, all right. So what is the commission wish to do at this time? We're still in the public hearing. Let me just go back to the public and see if there's anyone else who wanted to address the commission regarding this application. Hearing them. Okay.
So Commissioner Miller, again, I guess this would be a question for Maureen to help educate me. I'm presuming that 2,000-square-foot retail space limitation is included in section 11R12A and C.
Same.
C. So what would someone have to do to, to get that changed? Or what would have to happen to get that changed to address Mr. Diaddio's concerns?
Um, so that is the prohibiting language. And it would be a proposed text amendment to that section to change the minimum or the maximum retail area, convenience store area.
So as a.
That's the way it's written, I'm flipping to it.
But as a developer, Mr. Diaddio could come in and request that text change.
Yes.
May, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Peter Diaddio here again. So if that 2,000-square-foot limitation is, remains in this text change, then do I understand the new building can only have, the new 5,000-square-foot building can only have 2,000 square feet of retail unless this is amended? Is that what I just heard?
I don't know.
I'm not sure how to answer that.
I do not, I do not believe that was the intent. That's not the way I read it. This is Maureen speaking. I do not believe that was the intent. I believe that intent of this regulation is to, and, and I believe that's exactly what Attorney Sullivan added in the red text today.
Yes.
That this is to provide an exception to that regulation if you meet the requirements of this new motor vehicle fueling station with the 5,000 square feet, the two acres, et cetera.
2,000 goes away.
And the 2,000 goes away. It's, his new language says, and specifically does not otherwise affect the application or interpretation of 11R2A and C. And C is the one that reads, "At filling stations which do not offer repair services as an accessory use, a maximum of 2,000 square feet of space may be utilized for the display of retail merchandise within the station. And retail and convenience merchandise shall not be displayed or advertised outside of the filling station." So the current regulation says they're limited to 2,000 square feet of retail's display area. Not, not 2,000 square foot building, but 2,000 feet of retail display. So they have storage, they have their other items and then other, not retail. And then the, his amendment says, the amendment is specifically not, that doesn't apply to the new, new works, does not apply to the new kind of station.
And the critical language also was, our text which says notwithstanding the provisions of 12R12A and C. Notwithstanding essentially regardless. So, and then it goes on to say 5,000 square feet of retail merchandise. So the notwithstanding is the critical language.
I need more coffee. All right, is there anyone else from the public who wishes? Mr. Diaddio, did you want to, did you have any further comments for the commission?
No, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else online, any of my commissioners online? All right, so, so I guess.
That was you say, I, I support Mr. Diaddio's guys about just the 2,000, that was our retail merchandise.
Yeah, I, I just, it's like I said.
It's a substantial text change to that particular provision.
Well, I, I think that's what my point to the plan of conservation development is, is apparently we're opening Pandora's box. And I don't see this as a quick fix for, you know, what you're proposing or what Mr. Diaddio is hoping for with his possible text amendment. But I think it's something that we really need to just, we're going to really have to take that into consideration and see what direction we're going in and what we're, and how it's going to overall impact us moving forward. So.
That, that was me, not that, that, that was of gas stations all the way down the turnpike. That was the thing was happening for a while.
Well, it was. It was driving, it was the only thing we were getting.
And so that was just eliminated, that 15-foot leagues between each of all that. This is a total, to me, this is a total different animal.
Yeah.
You're not clocking a small little gas station with Dunkin' Donuts in it.
Yeah.
You know, and, and even the one with the little Dunkin' Donuts in it now. Subway or something with it, you know, you know. Maureen, we've got a pizza place that Dunkin' Donuts in it. So they're, they're heading that way too. This one's just a bigger concept.
Okay. Well, in the public hearing, so, okay, Maureen, one more?
If I may, I just, and, and we did not perceive this for doing any market research or not that I, really, that's really not our wheelhouse. That would be more the applicants or the public hearing, or the, or someone speaking at the public hearings wheelhouse. But if I may comment on what I'm hearing is whether we had the discussion about the 3,500 square feet. We have, we're having the discussion about the, or the proposal is the 5,000-square-foot minimum building. And I think the point Mr. Diaddio was trying to make is perhaps 5,000 is big and should be, you know, it should be less than 5,000, but maybe not as much as, as small as 3,500. And, and in that I cannot provide data as to what makes or breaks a Dunkin' Plus versus an actual multi-destination, a multi-use destination. I'm sorry, I can't provide that for the commission, but that I think is part of the question that was being raised by the public.
Okay.
Comment.
All right. So I guess, do we continue this or do we close it? Or what's the consensus? Does everyone have? All right, so you have all your information. All right.
Commissioner Zerbozo, I just have a couple of comments for discussion. One being in regards to the concerns from the commission about what will be built on the turnpike now in regards to this text amendment. I would just ask ourselves to see that, according to Mr. Sullivan, no other town in the state has this restriction. So if we look at the turnpike, when you look northbound at Newington or southbound to Meriden, do we see a proliferation of gas stations or a gas station alley down those aspects of the turnpike? To my knowledge, I don't see that when I travel via Newington into Weathersfield. To add to that, there's been some discussion about the proliferation of gas stations. And Christopher Edge brought up earlier that it may be a hindrance to competition, but I would posit that, you know, developers typically know what they're doing. So they need to do a market analysis. We already have plenty of gas stations in this area. I would be kind of surprised to see developers just pile in and build a whole bunch of fueling stations, EV or what have you, against the best interest of, you know, economic and competitive performance. So I, I would just say that I think there's a lot to consider. But I think the idea that, you know, fueling stations are just going to pile in just for the sake of piling in is kind of a bit far-fetched in regards to the size of 5,000 to 3,500. I would just split the difference, average the two numbers and call it 4,250 with no other logic applied. That's all I have.
Well, okay, thank you, Mr. Zerbozo. Mr. Sigmat had a motion on the table. You withdrew your motion for the topic of discussion, right? Okay. So is there anyone else before Mr. Sigmat makes his motion? All right, Mr. Sigmat.
I think motion, close the public hearing.
Okay, we have, okay, we have the, we have the second by Mr. Wolin. And so, all right, terrific. And so, alright, terrific. So all is in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye?
Aye.
Alright, is there any commissioners out there who oppose? Okay, fine. Alright, so that's closed. Alright, second, uh, public hearing with the proposed amendment to the Berlin zoning regulations to Timothy Sullivan Esquire to add section 11 DD, which is the planned residential infill development. This was opened on April 15th, so we'll continue here. Alright, okay, Attorney Sullivan.
Well, good evening again. This is Terry King Sullivan, again, the law firm was now consultant. And a law firm has been hired by local developers regarding the redevelopment of old motel properties in a Berlin hotel. When I say old motel properties, it's a form of, uh, 1910 vintage hotel. Um, the proposal is for a new section in special regulation, section 11 DD, um, and we've, uh, called it the planned residential infill development. The proposed new section would, by special permit, allow the conversion of existing motel properties, limited to motels that I said a lot, having total acreage of about less than 0.5 acres and not more than three acres with frontage on the Berlin turnpike. And actually, these motels, there's, we have identified 13 of them, for this infill development, um, are really two acres. But some of them are so close to two acres, probably haven't had a survey taken in decades. And we wanted to make sure that a proper surveying showed 2.2 acres, maybe 3 acres, just in case a survey shows it slightly more than two acres. Um, none of them are more than three acres, so it's, it remains the same, to come with those motel properties. Um, I think, uh, Chris Edge and Jim Holby, last time we had a, a, a display, map property list, total effect. It specifically excludes the newer hotels, the old Hawthorne, now less days in, built in 1970, and the Best Western built in 2002. Uh, as previously stated, the process for converting a motel to a planned residential infill development is by special permit. And in reviewing the proposal, and I submitted a revised proposal, which I want to all briefly submit to the planning staff about a week ago, uh, and I believe it was in your packet as a redline version, which outlined the proposed changes. I specifically addressed and specifically addressed the concerns of the commission at that time, at the last public hearing. Uh, the proposed density for this would be 10 units per acre. Um, we, we did that, um, really as a, as a compromise between section 8F3A, the Kennington overlay zone, which under Village Core 1 allows 26 units per acre. Uh, a studio would be 508, 500 square feet bedroom, one bedroom, 600 square feet, and two bedrooms, 750 square feet. There's also under 7H to Rowan Turnpike, two zone, um, four units per acre. Trying to give incentives with the higher density to developers to enhance the, uh, the look of the Rowan turnpike. Many of these motels are built right up on the turnpike and, and need a, a, a refreshment. And we'll get more into that, but Chris Edge referred to it as he didn't want to just, uh, pig in a blanket. And, uh, we, we took his advice and we'll go over some, some of these, uh, changes, starting off with paragraph 3C. And that concern was raised by, uh, Madam Chairman Naveen, uh, height limitation. Uh, we, we adopted the residential height limitation of 2.5 stories of 35 feet in height. Under section D, um, no dwelling unit shall exceed 1,000 square feet of living area. And that was Commissioner Sigma that wanted a cap on the square footage of these, of this structure. Um, 3E, the existing motel building shall be demolished to the extent that 50% of the dwelling units are in destruction. And that was Director of Economic Development, Chris Edge, that he wanted assurance of significant rehabilitation. Guarantee more than a coat of paint or a pig in a blanket as well. That's also protected under, uh, section 2C. Um, I would emphasize that the location, orientation, design, scale, texture, materials, landscaping, general bulk, height, and other features shall be consistent with the characteristics of the town and neighborhood in which the proposed development is located and shall take into account where appropriate the nature of the surrounding area and the extent to which the proposed use and its features and appearances will be in harmony with the surrounding area. Under, uh, paragraph 3F, um, this is a very big, um, concern. Uh, we've added an affordable component, and in adding that comfortable, that affordable component, we, we adopted the existing Rowan turnpike development zone language. Uh, this would, the town would get credit towards its 10% affordable housing threshold. Uh, this is really, um, what would be, uh, under 8 dash 2I of the, of the general statutes, the inclusionary zoning statute. It does not, uh, uh, require set aside development, which would give the developer the ability to transfer the burden of proof. That burden of proof would remain with the developer if a special permit was denied, but because it's inclusionary zoning, um, the town would still get the points towards their 10% affordable housing threshold. And we adapted the, as you can see, we adapted 30% or less income, 80% of the median income as defined in the Connecticut State Statute, 3D, and 20% of total. To that. Commissioner Rogan was concerned about, uh, somebody establishing a trailer park here. And that would be prohibited under section 420. Under section G, we added accessory structure. That was just a simple oversight, you know, if these, these provisions don't build in or accessory structures, so it would extend within less than 40 feet of the street. Other than regarding all of this, last public hearing, I think we've addressed all the commission's concerns. Open to take any questions at this time?
Okay, terrific. Um, commissioners, any questions? Yes, Mr. Miller.
Commissioner Miller, um, one, that's probably a dumb question. What's a half a story? So two and a half stories, what's a half a story?
It's, so it is, it is defined in our regulations and it's basically, if you think of a Cape Cod-
No, we're, we're changing them, that's true. We're changing them, we're changing them, so don't worry.
If you think of a Cape Cod with the, the half, basically half of the area in the upper level is available to be up to code for livable area, um, it's, that's the half.
Okay.
Typically you're referring to doorwork space.
So it could be living space, so.
Yes, it's, but-
It's two full floors and-
It wouldn't be, you're right, but it couldn't be brought all the way out to the edges, it would have to stay.
So the second question I had is under 3D, should we think about, I'm concerned a little bit with E relative to D, that 50% of dwellings, it's just, I mean, construction, okay. Should we have like minimum size at all? Is it reasonable to say we, you know, we don't want 200 square foot apartments or?
I don't think we need, I, I would agree with that. Uh, we, we, we didn't differentiate between, in, in the regulations, this is under 8F3A, the Kennington overlay zone, you have a studio of 500, and one bedroom is 600, a two bedroom is 750. You wanted to establish a minimum of 500.
That would, you know, I, I would like that, to be honest with you. It's a little, a little cubbyhole, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
But you don't want, I don't want to see this, like, first and soonst, or turn it, right?
Right.
Hey, I got that.
Yeah.
Turnpike, so.
Well, I think that the, actually, the proposal itself, it's, uh, it's quite creative, to tell you the truth. And, but I do think that, you know, we look at it and I, I think it's turning, it's turning a corner on those little hotels that are there and making them something probably a little more realistic and, um, solid.
And mostly around now in form of parcels that really are subject to the combined use of large development as well, so I just think it's a little, um,
Yeah.
And allows to stimulate investment and, uh, and improve the look of the turnpike.
Yeah.
And will also provide, uh, stable housing as opposed to trade.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, but I agree with the point, you talk about the dwelling unit should not exceed 1,000 square feet, to put a maximum on that. I mean, cause you might have somebody who actually has a design and maybe it's 12.
Commissioner Rogan?
Maybe he's not, yeah, hold on, Brian. Maybe he's not gonna go for, you know, the, the little, little boxes, so to speak. Maybe he's gonna do something, instead of six units, maybe he's gonna have four, and he's gonna have like four nice ones, you know? Uh, anyway, yes, Brian?
Hi, yes, I'm looking at paragraph 3E and my understanding was the point of this was to try and remove those, as you'd called them, uh, sore thumbs on the Berlin turnpike, remove those motels and replace them with new construction. And when I see that only, the regulation only says that 50% has to be new construction, my concern there would be that we have a mishmash of old motel with new construction. And I don't really think that, uh, meets the, what we're looking for here as to cleaning up those properties.
So you would almost like wanna erase the whole thing and just rebuild?
That would be my, uh, thought process, yes.
Or what do they do down in Florida? They remove the whole building except for one wall. And then they're able to rebuild, they do that for, that's an interesting rule.
I think there's a protection as well in the section that I read under 2C, about the location, orientation, design, scale, texture, and size. I'm taking, I'm, I'm consistent with characteristics. So, um, you wouldn't get to just leave the existing motel. It would have to, uh, be meshed with whatever new construction you're doing, it would have to be consistent.
Out of all the rehab, it just wouldn't be random construction.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, uh, did you get that answer, Brian?
I did.
Okay, good. Is there anyone else from the commission? And we're in a public hearing, so I'll take comments from any commissioners?
Yes.
Yeah, Tim, and then I'll go to Chris Edge, who had his waving.
Okay, hi, Chris.
Alright, go, Tim.
The original proposal that we, it's the last October, under whatever it was, with many homes, they put on a property like low development, uh, on a common use, uh, property, many homes. This, this brought it up to, again, uh, thousands of square foot home, but into the, uh, condo looking thing, uh, townhouses, stuff like that, look, instead of just a regular, a small cave or a small ranch or whatever. I think this brought it up a little bit more in looks, uh, for our development. You know, I don't know if, uh, it could be a combination of small houses and townhouses. You know, I, you know, uh, it could be the, the number of units.
Yeah.
You know, it's just a more cosmetic look type thing than anything else.
Yeah.
And I would also agree with that, and that's the purpose of the special permit process, is the commission's gonna obtain that off-line discretion
Yeah.
in whether it meets the characteristics of the hotel.
Yes, absolutely, if you want to impact them. Uh, Mr. Edge, I know. Mr. Edge?
Sorry, actually, I was speaking to my children at the moment, but I couldn't hear you guys.
Oh, okay, I, I saw you waving hysterically and I thought you were-
No, 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 it's, it's not that, I could not hear you guys, so.
No.
Thank you for a couple of minutes. Um, I've been working closely with Attorney Sullivan on the text amendment since the fall of 2020 and believe it's a huge opportunity for this body to help transform the Berlin turnpike for our getting rich. The Economic Development Commission voted to support this through the following motion, a receptive and supportive of alternative uses to motels in the Berlin turnpike, including residential development. So economic development itself is behind the reason, thinks residential is a great option. This text amendment will allow us to see properties that have not been improved in decades, and not just see investment, we take eyesore and turn into assets. So coming through years, my effort will include more than just recruiting firms, but also recruiting talent to Berlin. As our firms grow, they need young, creative, and fleet. This text amendment will allow us to have additional options for newly constructed houses. I believe with the correct wording, this can provide our community with a new chance for investment and redevelopment in an area where it truly needs.
Okay, thank you. Um, is anyone else from the public that wishes to address the commission regarding this issue? Alright, so hearing none, any other commissioner comments? Maureen?
Um, so I did wanna comment that we had, um, some concerns that the wording and comments that were made as we were viewing it in the office, concern that that wording, um, with regard to, in E for the Disney motel, be motel buildings that be demolished to the extent that 50% of the dwelling units are new construction, which, um, I don't know if anyone recalls, but that was, you know, kind of in the interest of, um, the environment. If you can not raise everything and rehabilitate it, um, to, to be the new development according to the site standards. But the concern was-
Couldn't we just drop it behind that and the rehab of the bounce? Right, you know, I'm just trying to get uniform, so I would say, so 50% is new, and then we add it and the re, and the bounce to be rehabbed.
I actually had another, um, sense to go in there, but that's fine, that's fine.
You know, I'm just saying, if, if, you don't think if the goal is to make more nice, we don't wanna see two, two brand new buildings.
Yeah, I would like, yes, yeah.
And not that I'm saying that Mr. Sullivan's client's gonna do this, but there's always someone out there who's looking to take advantage of it.
Yeah.
And they leave the two tops there and then, you know, we have the same problem where we started at.
Yeah.
So if we say 50% new construction and the bounce to be rehabbed, then we're covered.
So my, my suggestion-
Cause they gotta come to us anyways.
Architectural, design, similar, okay?
Well, they gotta come to us anyways, right?
Similar architectural design, something like that, of, of new buildings.
Yeah, yeah.
So the old building's gotta be architecturally updated to-
Yeah, to the same standard of the project.
Same standard of the, of the, the homes there, the new home being there.
Right, yeah. Which would happen during the site plan review process and special permit itself. However, the question, yeah. The, the question that came up within the office was that, um, it seemed as though the motel, it may suggest to some that the motel uses were allowed to stay for 50%. And we wanna make that perfectly clear that that's not so. So I had two different, um, addition suggestions, um, that could work, adding at the end of E, um, no structure would be allowed to remain motel, which is much more simplified than, and in the design section where I'm not sure it would fit, versus putting it up at the top in the purpose at the end of, you know, um, at the end of the paragraph of purpose, but is not intended to facilitate the conversion of non-residential uses, uh, to, but to redevelop motel use sites into permanent dwellings in their entirety.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think-
And it belongs to the purpose more than in-
In other words, they're abandoning the motel to, to take on the new, the new layer.
The motel down there are a little small.
Well, yeah.
One bedroom, efficiency.
Yeah.
You never can, in order to do it now because of the 1,000 square foot, they would have knocked down the walls and, and-
They'll probably to combine.
And, and do that in order to go to 1,000 square foot.
Yeah, but how do you, how do you feel about going to a minimum as opposed to a maximum?
Well, you go, you go minimum 500, maximum 1,000, cause then you start building huge apartment type units, that's a whole nother scenario, cause no one's gonna-
500 realistic? I guess that's my question.
No, I'm saying a minimum of 500.
Well, that's what I mean, but it's a minimum of 500 realistic, is that a, a, a space?
A studio apartment.
You saw what the, uh, uh, in-law apartment, then we just proved, in-law apartment, then we just proved that one of the houses was 178 square foot.
Yeah, but the common area was there.
But there was common area, but, but, you know, they had the living room, they had the bedroom, and they had the kitchen.
I'm just, I'm just questioning the number. I, I didn't know if the number, because I don't have, I, I'm not in- I, I didn't know if the number, because I don't have, I, I'm not in real estate anymore, so I think it's a question of. Is, is that a, a realistic minimum?
Well, five hundred was the number adopted by the commission for the Kensington Oldham Zone, Village Core One.
Oh, okay, well, I understand where I did. I guess so. I'm just trying to imagine five hundred square feet.
Commissioner Miller, I think if we get too large, the twelve, fourteen hundred, we're getting three bedrooms.
Go ahead.
And you're getting, right?
Yeah, right.
Getting kids, and then we're kind of losing ground.
Yeah. Okay, oh, yeah, yeah.
I, I agree.
Yeah, affordability goes down.
Okay.
Yeah, this, this is a design for the empty nesters who, who, who came out of college.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
All right, so we should leave it as, as a top of the, the one thousand.
So it's something that, I, in town world, it'll help you.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that, uh, I had an understanding of the numbers and, and I was comfortable with it. Yes, Maureen, I knew you had your thoughts.
That's all right. I just, you know, I'm not, I just, um, wanna, um. Keep in mind the, and, and the consideration that should be made to the density. Um, and I don't have a recommendation one way or another, um, but the one per four thousand square feet is at ten. Roughly ten units per acre. I guess, did I do that math right? Yeah, okay, yeah. I am so asleep right now, or no, I'm so dehydrated right now. Um, so basically, our workforce is at fifteen units per acre. Um, the, um, PR three zone is at ten units per acre. Um, and then in the Village Core, as you discussed at the last meeting, um, the units per acre is twenty-six units per acre. But that's at the Village Core with the TOD development, and that's the purpose of that. The other areas are down to six for Village in general, um, Neighborhood Affordable Housing, OT two. And BTD are all at the four units per acre or six units per acre and, uh, with an incentive for up to eight. So you, we had discussed the last meeting. I give you kind of an overview of what the other housing, uh, multifamily unit types had. Um, as their densities.
Ten units per acre, it's, uh, it's about what those, those hotels are right now. Uh, they, they, they're nineteen twenty units, uh, nineteen twenty unit, uh, one bedroom ranches, I think.
To six?
So you still have the same, I can see what you're going up.
I, no disrespect to, I mean, are you positive about that? Are you just guessing?
Yeah.
Because we don't wanna, we don't wanna handcuff someone that this is gonna work for and then break it down to a number that is unrealistic.
No, I don't, I know that, that the units, that the hotels that I know, uh, on the turnpike are all twenty, nineteen, twenty units.
All thirteen sites?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, if I may, they're on the chart that was distributed at the last, oh, I didn't add a point of statement to it.
And that's what I'm saying, I don't want.
I know that, I know that, I know that when it's, uh, it's all sort of motel.
All right, you're, 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 we have that figure on here.
So the biggest units are.
That's the existing number? I think that one on the other side.
All right.
Yeah, you know, and eighteen, thirteen, twelve, fifteen.
What would they allow?
Twenty, twenty is the highest.
And so.
No, I, I just, we had discussed that number and I wanted to show you if it's a, just let's have it to give you.
Okay, all right, uh, so. So any other questions, comments? Is, um, is eight units per acre unrealistic or is that?
I was just, Commissioner Miller, I mean, the lower you go, the less economic people be making for these people. So you make it prohibitive and none of this will get done.
Right.
I mean, this is equivalent to like R ten, you know, developments that are R ten, they put houses on.
Okay.
I don't think, I don't think, yeah, no, I mentioned.
I'm just putting, yeah, I, I just don't, I, I don't.
I don't think it's unreasonable and, and it, and it's not twenty-six an acre, you know what I mean? And to, to George's point. If, if you make it undo, unrealistic for the people investing their money to make any money, then it's gonna stay motels forever. And then we just wasted, you know, the effort.
Okay.
And that's just my thing.
So, are we looking, so ten units per acre?
It's, it's. Yeah, the only, the only reason I, uh.
I don't know.
I go along with that because years ago I did study on some of the units because those will be allowed for sale. And I was looking at planning and building something myself.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, and it ended up to be in, building a motel like Best Western.
Yeah.
And, you know, you put two, two, two pieces of property together and build Best Western, you know, that's probably not what we want. You know, uh, you want it for towns residential and, and smaller type of, and, and that type of hotels.
Yeah.
Where the feasibility came into.
Yeah.
All right, I, I see a Peter Zarabos on us. Are you looking to make a comment, Peter? Okay, Diane, are you still with us? And do you have any questions or comments, maybe from Brian Rogan?
I am still with you. I have no comments. I'm not seated at this time.
Oh, that's right, you're not seated, sorry. All right, so what would, do we wanna, um, do, is everyone satisfied with the information they have? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion, close the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. And so we have Mr. Wollman and Mr. Sigma. It's the motion, um, for the discussion. Then all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, no problem. Okay, on to the old business, and this is where we have the special permit, uh, site plan, um, application of the BT two thousand eight LLC. For the mixed-use development at four oh four Berlin Turnpike, um, and.
Chairman, Chairman Veely, I'll be stepping down on this as well. I was not present at the four fifteen meeting.
Okay, all right, terrific. And so we'll just continue with the same, uh, votes. Okay, um, so under the special permit site plan application, BT two thousand eight LLC, for the mixed-use development at four oh four Berlin Turnpike. And what do we have here?
So we've been, I've been working on a motion. Um, I want to note for the commission's purposes, um, you have not yet received a motion. Um, there are a number of factors and a lot of transcripts to go through.
Yeah.
Um, but statutorily, the commission is allowed sixty-five days to decide on a, a hearing and, a hearing item. And June nineteenth is the deadline for the hearing closed on four fifteen. So I ask, um, that although you may want to discuss some aspects of this, there were some considerations to be made. You may or may not just, um, discuss further, I would recommend that the commission does, um, wait to decide the, in its entirety. Till you have a motion that has all the details in it that reflect the, the nuances of the project and the details that have been discussed.
Okay, and do you think two weeks would be appropriate or will you need more time? Do you want?
I, I would, um, I, I totally expected to have it accomplished by the end of last week. And our office is just that kind of office, so my intention, I have set myself a deadline for the first of next week. Um, we did just get a new temporary help in the office while friends away. So he started yesterday and we've got somebody answering the phones and able to understand what we do. Um, as far as content goes, post things and whatever, but that's not part of this hearing, so bye for us. So I would, I, my goal is next week to have it.
Okay, so how about if we go out to the, the second May meeting, which is, uh, two weeks from today?
I, I believe that would be enough time. As long as I get it to you guys next week, I'll, I'll email it early in the week.
Okay.
And then you'll have enough time to review. Um, I did wanna make the comment that we have a couple of items, um, with regard to it. Um, that you started to discuss last time. I don't know if they're still on anyone's mind. And if you want to give staff some direction with regards to, to writing up a motion for them. But one being the lot size question, that ten acre versus two acre, the underlying zone is two acres in a nutshell. I'm summarizing what Dr. Bullen did a much better job of presenting to you. But the lot size being two acres versus a compilation of the lots to ten acres. And whether the lots have to be readjusted to become ten acres. Or if the compilation of them for the purpose of the development, but then the, um. Keeping the underlying two-acre zoning is allowed, which, what the interpretation of the regulations has, has, as far as that goes.
Mr. Miller, I thought we were in agreement to go with Dr. Bullen's suggested wording.
I, I thought so also.
That was my recommendation.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, I, I didn't have that clear, so that will be.
It was a very long meeting.
Yeah.
I see. I actually tried to listen to, to that part thoroughly. Um, also, anyway, you know, that, this, I think, is less necessary for the motion. Plus the word easily be substituted in, but whether the open space goes to the town or to, um, the land trust. And that consideration, I, I guess I'm also putting thoughts in your head as to what, you know, where you all landed on that.
Well, isn't, isn't the practice to offer the land to the land trust to see whether or not it's feasible for them to take it on as opposed to the town?
Um, I believe this was part of the discussion, um, so I, and I don't wanna speak out of turn, but I believe I'm reiterating the record. That with the contiguous, um, town-owned property, there was question whether town-owned was, you know, whether town owner, land trust. Was the, as Commissioner Jersey says, the flavor of the commission. Um, you know, and that's a consideration that you heard, I think, from both camps on, through the public hearing process.
Jersey Council have a meeting coming up in, uh, before our next meeting? Because it, it might be a good idea to ask them if it's contiguous with, uh, open space that we already have, would they wanna take, they may wanna take it.
I may have to ask, if we can ask them, because that would be new testimony. So I don't believe we could make that request.
Okay.
Um, but if allowed, I'll, uh. But I, I believe that would be new testimony on behalf of the town.
Okay.
Um, and. Then I, and we discussed it during the last hearing, and I, I think I got the, the clear regardless. But the interpretation of the ma- maximum retail display area versus other uses in the filling station building. Because of that, the filling station building is forty-three-ish hundred square feet. And, um, they have proposed the retail, convenience retail display at the two thousand square feet. But having the larger building with other uses. So that's just an interpretation that does, meets the regulation.
Okay.
Um, I believe those were the, the items that had to, that I still needed a little to, or the first one most important.
Something that, that was waiting with, sending to us, so, uh. Discussing, but.
You, you don't need to.
It was presented to us.
No, it.
Uh, as the, as the way it is, yes.
Two thousand square foot detail.
Okay.
So, so, uh, I mean, they always come back in the site plan and then, um, to, to.
Yeah.
That's that item, right?
Okay, I just, um, make sure that it's.
So you're gonna basically continue to work on the motion, all right, and then we'll have.
Yes. So I'm asking for you, I'm requesting that the, the commission not make that decision until they have a good motion.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Miller, I guess, just regarding the town versus the, for own land trust. I mean, one of the suggestions, like, uh, Commissioner Sigma, was to offer it to the town first. They might not even want it, just to see if they wanted to include it and make the parcels together and maybe expand on the hiking trails or something like that. Going with that sort of.
That, that is be an acceptable way to write the two, to put the votes in, you can make it an order.
And then if not, then to refer it to the Berlin Land Trust, the common beings at the Berlin Land Trust doesn't really have any money to do anything with. So that if it went to the Berlin Land Trust, it would just be conservation land essentially.
Yeah.
So I, I, I thought that was a good idea, you know, news.
It's, it'd be the, expanding the town-owned property along the pond, is there, everything else? Uh, there is some potential there, I guess, if you do that. Uh, but that's a, it's always, um, most of the welcomes is always offered to the town first and then to the town, the land trust, so.
Yeah. Okay, it's probably the best thing to do, which is offer it to them first.
I can write it that way.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
I can.
All right, so, um.
Probably the town.
One more item.
Yeah.
And I guess does the decision on, uh, super gas station, you know, whether we change the square footage? Does that have any bearing on the daddy-o's plans or would it open up, you know, and move, move the two thousand square foot restriction?
I believe the way it's written, he, they would have to come back to come under that provision if you were, to write it at the lower.
Okay.
At the lower building side.
It's like.
The, um, regulations at the time you make your application are the regulations that apply. So the day the application was received, the way the regulations are rewritten is the regulations that we evaluate on.
Okay.
You look for site plan, it's possible from the.
All right, so we're, we're gonna, so do we need a, a motion then to continue?
Um, I don't believe so. It's just an item that you're not acting on, but you can maybe get a consensus of that.
All right, so consensus that we wait for the, so we're going to wait for the motion to be, right?
We'll wait to, to wait for the, uh, motion to be written.
And maybe we'll see you on the twentieth of May, right? Because that's the next meeting, be the twentieth of May. So that'd be part of the motion, Tim, or to, so your suggestion? Okay, fine, all right.
So. So. Twenty of May.
So, and we have a second one, yeah, 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 thank you, Mr. Wollman.
Second.
All right, so then we have to propose amendment to the Berlin zoning regulations for the new section of six G three. Double E gasoline filling stations. All right, so what would, uh, what would the commission like to do with this, the filling station? This is a little bit tough one because it. I mean, I can see the, I can, I can see where the growth is gonna be and that, you know, we've given a lot of consideration to this. Any other last thoughts? Do we have a motion to make, a motion to make a motion or?
Uh, I think it's a, it's a good advancement in our regulations, uh, to go with the times that, uh. What's happening in, in the world, uh, you know, and, uh, well, it's great for us to be the. Basically, the first ones in the area or the first ones to, to, uh, start thinking about that. Especially with the, you know, the state looking into EV charging stations and all this other stuff, and they're gonna be giving them out for free. You know, uh, so, so it's, it's, uh, I think it's a good time for us.
Do we have any consideration for, um? No, I, okay, so I can't find my notes right now, so. So forget it, guys. Forget it, I can't, I can't find what I wanted to. A clarification on the, um, on the, uh, wheelbase thing? Do we need anything in there?
That was on the site plan. Well, no, that, that would have to be.
The one that was, no, I think you're right, because then they're gonna come to us and they're gonna set up the stations where they're gonna be. You gotta have enough room, safety, site plan, parking, so I think.
But the wording in this, this base gotta say.
What the wheelbase feature?
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah.
Up to forty-five foot vehicles.
Okay, so.
Forty-foot vehicles, I don't know.
Okay.
They are, they are.
So the overall, uh, wheelbase greater than forty feet in length?
No.
All right, the facility shall not be designed to service motor vehicles with a overall wheelbase greater than forty feet. I knew I got a thought in there.
Can I make a suggestion, it's just for staff reading purposes in the future with new staff and whatever?
Yes. Sure.
That it says the facility shall be designed to service motor vehicles with an overall wheelbase nine. It says the facility shall be designed to service motor vehicles with an overall wheelbase not greater than. Instead of having the not at the beginning of the sentence, put the not right in front of the greater. And and I know that's nitpicky, but it's.
That's fine. No, no, I, I made.
It it calls it out instead of getting lost in the.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
And then everything else, we just, if there's an application, then we'll just have to deal with it. And obviously with um, regards to the fire marshal or whatever, that would all be the safety regulations of.
Okay. Do you want to modify it though, with the wording thrown out that I that I proposed or or which was. Or um, located under underground when allowed by code. Uh, by pertinent local and state codes and regulations. And. And is otherwise in compliance with pertinent state and local regulations.
So that's fine.
Some stuff for golden bulk ground, huh? Still want that, I guess.
Yeah, but.
Contamination in the ground.
But I'm also thinking about.
Allowing. I don't agree with it, but they allow them on the ground.
Yeah, but I was also thinking about this combination of different fuels or whatever, uh, the safety, whatever.
Oh, I said some more.
Separation, separation of fuels and everything else would have to be covered under a fire marshal, I think, with period.
Yes. Alright, and is there any other uh, comments from our commissioners online? Because we're having fun here, we miss you.
There was, there was one other you mentioned while we were talking, I believe actually. I I who was mentioning it, um, the not in number, little Roman numeral three. Um, fuel stations instead of fuel pumps.
Fuel station.
Yeah, that was, sorry, this was.
Gas.
And then there was some comment about diesel.
Yeah, but do you and then, because that's a common, I I don't know.
Would that not just be a fuel?
So we have gas, electric, natural gas.
Yeah, but I see if you just put fuel station to cover everything.
Well, yeah, fuel station says it all, but.
Yeah. So we'll just.
Oh, it's at the top, it's at the beginning.
Yeah.
Just put in fuel station.
Alright. Uh, again, online, any commissioners have any comments on this? Okay, alright, so what would you like to do with this one?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
To approve.
Commissioner Miller, do we, are we going five thousand, or are we going Peter's suggestion for the forty two fifty?
Well. I'm I'm gonna go with what the applicant asked.
Okay.
If that's, given what's comfortable here, because we shouldn't be adjusting for some of this, not the applicant.
Yeah. Okay.
That makes sense, right?
Alright, yeah, cool.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the uh, proposed amendments, the Brolin zoning regulations for gasoline filling stations. With a couple of caveats, we're staff, we placed some of the wording for fuel station. Um, and item four, um, using the language that we're reinstated for safety as far as where the uh, tanks will be kept. Minimum of two acres, I believe, is in here, and increasing the wheelbase from thirty to forty feet.
So we have the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sigma for the discussion on this. So all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, you gotta take a, okay, go ahead, Laurie's gonna do a roll call.
Chairman Beal.
Aye.
Um, George Millard.
Aye.
Brian Rogan.
Aye.
I'm gonna mess up who seated, I think, I'm sorry.
Uh, who seated is Peter.
Steve Wolman.
Aye.
Um, Tim Sigma.
Aye.
Diane Joyce, he is not, um, Steve Biella.
Aye.
And I believe it was.
Peter Zerbozo.
Peter Zerbozo.
Aye.
I don't think Andrew is seated on this one, I think he's taken that off. Double check, or maybe he can, he can tell us. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, that's seven, yeah.
Yeah, we have seven.
Yeah. That is what it was, thank you, so let me look it up.
Alright.
Alright.
Alright, so motion carries. Alright, so then next is proposed amendment to the Brolin zoning regulations for Timothy Sullivan, as far as add the new section of eleven D D. Land residential in build development, so do we have any uh? Questions on this? Motion on this, anyone online? Feedback on this, what would you like to do?
I think that the architectural view of the many units that were sent. Should be ordered in there somehow, uh, that uh. Corresponds to the new units that uh. They are only fifty percent new.
And did we have a, did we decide on what we're gonna do for per acre? Did we say ten? I think it was ten?
One per four thousand square feet.
Okay. We're good with that, okay. Alright, so um. Any other questions or concerns, so if none, do we have a motion?
Commissioner Rogan. My only, my only concerns would be, we have the minimum of five hundred square feet, the maximum of a thousand. The other fifty percent, if it is not to be completely new construction, that it has to be rehabbed and meet the architectural, uh. You know, format of the new construction. And that we uh, put in there that the, you know, it says fifty percent, that there is absolutely no motel use. Um, on these properties once converted.
Okay, almost sounds like.
Is that a motion?
That sound pretty good.
No motion. Does that have a motion?
Sure, I'll make that a motion.
Okay.
Can I add, do we, do we need to put, I'm also not intended use of trailer parks?
Alright, go ahead, twelve.
Or is it already a given, the wording, Laurie?
I think that's given in our, in the regulations themselves.
Just wanted to make that one.
Um, Tim waited that out, I'm trying to. Oh, actually, we're searching the word.
I, we can just add it, it was.
Okay. Alright, so do you have a manner in which or a place to add it?
Do you need to mention?
Let's see, I figured.
It's appropriate, Laurie.
I will just, I think, um, the purpose, we'll just add um.
I'll use a note trailer park.
So just as as I said earlier, I'll um, polish up um. Commissioner Rogan's words with what I said earlier, but to redouble the motel use sites into permanent dwellings in their entirety. And um, as I read before, and that. No. Mobile. Home trailers. Are, a tra- mobile home trailers.
Are not allowed?
No mobile home trailers are allowed, that's, you know what, simple and pretty.
This is. Yeah.
Simple instead of pretty.
We have to mention in the motion for ten per acre?
It's in, his proposed language is for four thousand, um.
It's in there?
The unit shall be determined as follows, total gross land area divided by four thousand square feet equals maximum number of dwelling units allowed.
Okay. Okay, terrific, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Woolman for the discussion. And all those in favor, I, do you need a roll call on that?
I do, I do.
What?
Just those two that you always want to call.
I know, I know, I never know, sometimes you go, no, I don't want to even, okay, aye.
It's when they're, they're the decisions that you are bound to to make in this. Oh, land, um, Chairman Beal.
Yes, aye.
George Miller.
Aye.
Um, Brian Rogan.
Aye.
Steve Wolman.
Aye.
Tim Sigma.
Aye.
Uh, Steve Biella Junior.
Absolutely.
Okay, and and I believe, was this one, Andrew Ignani? You have the same problem with seating and unseating at the last meeting, and I'm very sorry, I'm not on top of that. The, did I, Andrew, were you seated, if I might ask?
I can't remember what Jo- what Joan said, so.
Um.
Oh, for good. Yeah, Andrew was on. Yes, like Nani and Biella.
Thank you, I thought they were switched off.
Yeah, they were, but on the conversion of the hotels issue, they were.
Yeah. They came back, yeah.
They were, they came back.
Okay, Andrew Ignani?
Uh, affirmative, aye.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, at least I'm not worried about that, alright, so where are we? Oh, we just did the vote, we're good.
Commissioner Business.
Oh, now we're on to commissioner business, so we have the discussion really of the P O C D.
Uh, so, so I have a very short update about that, so that's more.
Yes. The night of terms, oh.
More information for you for that, the that folder I asked you to 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 start compiling for P O C D things. But this is actually a survey that we'd like you to look at um, and give some input back to us if at all possible. And then um. Actually, which survey is this, I'm sorry, we have some. It's just, I put this in the package, I said, maybe I should go, so I wanna make sure, um. Yeah, so so this is for the planning and zoning commission, I think it would, if, I. I think any commission member could um, give us feedback if they like on this um, with regard to just where you see focus going. So that we can help direct some things, um, so if you guys can give us feedback um, by looking at this, you know, don't, don't overthink yourselves. But at the same time, it's a real quick survey we put together. Um, to to get a a feeling of of what's happening. Um, the other thing is, we have, we got the three consultant. Proposals for the RFQs, we've now asked them to put together scopes. Because with three, we decided, well, we'll just interview all three and see where they're, we're going, they're very different proposals. From very, very different types of firms. And um, so we're proceeding with that, and then we'll be setting up. Um, a a small interview panel, once they um. They give us back their scope and and projections. Um, that's about all we have on that. At this time.
Alright.
And then, okay, yep.
Okay, great, okay, so I will take the time to look it through and move on. Alright, and then next up, what do we have?
Um, if I may, you may, you can just email it or send it back to me or drop it off, it doesn't have to be at a next meeting, we're just gonna be putting it together with our P O C D stuff and and.
Yeah.
Getting it ready for for you, you don't have to be the ones getting analyzed, you said what.
Okay, so next up is the correspondence and matters of interest. We have the economic development director, correspondence. Alright.
Hello, everyone, uh, we'll hopefully make this pretty quick. Um, been contacted recently about our our favorite property, the Golden Triangle. Um, and every request recently has been industrial use, whether warehouses or similar.
Hold on, Chris, we're having, are you coming across a little bit garbled? So, I don't know, just wanna slow it down a little bit?
Sorry, is this better?
Oh, much better, thank you.
Awesome, so our favorite property, the Golden Triangle, I've been contacted by a couple of different people recently. Um, it has not been uses that fit within the current S B D D zone. Um, they're looking to potentially look at projects, whether it's warehouse or industrial type of use. And just wanted to just run it by this commission and get their thoughts. On a taxable job creator in industrial type use, and whether that would be something that the commission would be amenable to looking at. Um, I don't have anything solid yet, um, this project and the property is gonna take a large investment because it's a lot of rock. But I wanted to get this commission's thoughts, I think the current zone S P D D is not a fit for the current economy. Um, I think that industrial uses and the fact that right now there is a greater need for. High bay warehouse for distribution and your last mile distribution, including Amazon. Um, then there are space on the market. So I'm not looking for a yes or no, but it's more of a, would you be amenable to looking at a change to an industrial zone if we were able to get a nice taxable entity, some jobs and. Um, buildings on that parcel?
Aye.
Commissioner Rogan?
Yes, go ahead, Brian.
I would be open to that, as long as we just made sure to protect the residential that runs down Middletown Road.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, anyone else have?
I agree, right?
Yeah, okay. So Mr. Woolman agrees, and anyone else have anything to spread on?
I take, you can look at anything, basically, that that you could tax base and and.
Yeah.
Improvement for that property, whatever zone it is, you know, they could bring anything, you know, they brought in a big stadium in time, but you know.
Okay.
Uh, you know, bring it, bring it to the commission and say, you know, tell us what you, their ideas are.
Yeah.
You know, I think feasibility, it probably would be a good or. Industrial base, but.
Yep, and it has a, right onto loop nine.
But anything right back triangle.
Yeah.
Which is the, they call it the Golden Triangle, because that triangle, they're uh, the highways is the major draw.
Yeah.
And distribution center, those highways really are draw.
Yeah.
You know, they go or southeast west, anywhere from there, two hours to that means big city.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, my 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 novice interpretation is the highest and best use is distribution in today's marketplace. So I will definitely take your feedback, um, get it back to the folks I'm speaking with, and if it looks like we have something more real. And the framework for a project, I will come back to you and bring that to you conceptually to take further steps. But I appreciate everyone's time this evening, and thank you so much for your assistance with Attorney Sullivan and the other ones, I I look forward to seeing the great progress, we'll see in the next couple of months in front of this body.
Yes, excellent, and I think you have one other thing here for us, um, even Stevens?
Oh, even Stevens, yes, thank you.
Yeah.
So, um.
Stevens.
Sorry, uh.
That's okay.
Fried, so the gentleman who owns Red Fox in Middletown has purchased the even Stevens building, is gonna be opening up the Cornerstone Restaurant and Wine Bar. He is looking to do something that would be, you can see stone on the bottom and kind of a tan stucco above. He's not looking for facade monies, so it's not an official application, but I wanted to run it by this commission. Because I know we like to, it's in our major area, just kinda get your thoughts on it, see if the materials and the look seem to be a good fit. Um, he has also mentioned he's gonna be doing some type of landscaping, likely some potted plants because the entire thing is paved. So just wanted to get the blessing of this commission, uh, he wants to move ahead, but I didn't want to. Again, this commission, it's your job to look at kind of the overall feel and the scope. Um, so I wanted to just kinda get your thoughts on it, the good thing too is he's already making a major investment inside. And we're excited to have him in our community, and just would love your feedback.
Um, I do like the stone, and the color's pretty neutral. Um, anything we do to that property, I think is gonna be great. Um, my suggestion would be see if he could frame out those windows, because I think it'll put a nice little touch on it. Uh, maybe introduce a third color there, depending upon what his color scheme is for signage or whatever. Uh, is he proposing? Um, just a replacement of the signage that currently is there on the top of the building?
I am not a hundred percent certain, I I will talk to him about that and see if we can get maybe some third color within the signage.
Okay, did we ever get, uh, did we ever find out whether or not the handicap ramp is?
Um, no, a handicap ramp was not um, necessary to the building department as best I understand it, so they're gonna leave it as is. Um, and so the good thing is too, he can make a greater investment inside the building and the front of it. Because a handicap ramp is a very expensive um, venture.
So he's gonna do plantings or flower flowers where those two newspaper things are, they're coming out? Is he gonna dress up that area right in front of the stairwell, is that what it is, to break that up?
I will talk to him as soon as tomorrow, Chairwoman, and we'll, we'll see what we can do.
Okay, alright, looks good, go ahead.
Yeah, part of residential on top there. This will be a presentation, I don't know what's in it now, uh, but uh.
It's, this is uh, Attorney Officer Adam, uh, it's just office space up there.
Office space.
They were exploring potentially using it for other spaces, but that was denied for various party inside reasons.
Okay. Alright.
Well, you know, I mean, is that tile or stucco going up on that? Upper office area, that's that's uh. Signing on it, whatever, on it right now?
I have no idea, we never discussed it.
You know, so, you know, I mean, if you improve the bottom. You know, so, you know, I mean, I improved the bottom of the building, I think the top of that building will stick out like a sore thumb, you know, so either, uh, extra board or something up there, I don't know, uh, some matching color down below with the.
Well, uh, uh, all I can, Commissioner Ziegler, all I, all I can do is ask.
Let's not beat it to death, so I'll bring us something nice, Chris, we'll be very happy.
Something improving up there.
Absolutely.
I definitely wanna be at that ribbon party.
You got it. You, you, you can stand right next to Alan.
Alright, cool.
I, I, I wanna get his autograph, he's been so many pitches.
Oh, jeez, anyway, uh, any commissioners on the line that have any comments about the Even Stevens project? I think it's, I think it's a home run, can't wait, alright.
Alrighty, thanks for all, have a great night.
So you have our blessing.
Thank you.
Alright, what's left? That's it, right?
No, you were requested to, uh, and you, yeah, you added.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I got me ahead of myself, okay, so, we have this thing here.
Yes, if I can give you an update on this.
Yeah, please.
Um, they've been working on the site, we agreed to go out there, um, late this week and look at it before your meeting tonight, because in conversation with, um, his attorney, they asked us if you would, um, add it back onto the agenda, because they weren't quite finished, or weren't finished at all actually when they asked, and, um, requested staff go out there and tell them what needed to be removed, um, I, basically, we said, you need to clean it up, and you tell us when you have it cleaned up, um, so we agreed to go out there, ended up with our appointment yesterday being moved to today, just because of office coverage and, and activities within the office. So, the pictures that I have distributed, and Adam is sharing on the screen now, which is probably the easier way to see them anyway, they're much clearer than the prints are on the.
On the, on the left was from this morning's site visits with Maureen and myself, on the right are subsequent photos received in the afternoon, uh, from Mr. Kokomo.
So as of this morning, when we went out there, um, it was in very, very cluttered, and I would not have said very improved conditions, um, as you can see by those photographs, um. Somehow, late this, by late this afternoon, some miracles happened.
And all good. Maureen, I mean, we could look at these pictures all day long and look through it, here's the reality, if he doesn't clean it up, in my opinion, then we don't give the C O. I mean, it's, I mean, it's.
Simple.
It's simple, that was part of the stipulation that he got the building in the first place, so if he doesn't wanna remove his boats and toys, he doesn't get a C O, I mean, it's.
Tracks, trailer.
Right, am I wrong?
That's simple as that.
No, no, I mean, that's basically what it comes down to, I mean, he's made a great, great effort, but, I mean, it's like.
You know, make it look like a caf, cafistic atmosphere that it's supposed to be, it's supposed to look like a.
We're in the eleven hour era.
The other, the other buildings around, I don't know, on there, it should be similar with the grass.
Yeah, we're willing to work with him, but he's got a his timing, it just, it's a continue.
We can't give another C O for something that, that by, uh, violations on it.
Yeah.
We already said that we would.
Yeah, he's definitely made steps in the right direction, it's just we need a hundred percent.
The residential part, we already said we would weigh on that.
May I speak?
Um, so I do see that, um, we, that's what we were just doing over here, seeing who's on the line, um, and we have Tom Kokomo is on the line, I don't see that his attorney is, our attorney is.
That's, well, we're not really in a.
And then, and then we have two other, uh, members of the public, I think, one or two.
Well, we're not really in a public hearing, and this is pretty much a, I, I understand that they, uh, they've stayed on the line to hear what we have to say, but uh, the bottom line is, staff looking at direction from the commission, so, um, I, I, you know, at this point, because it's not a public hearing, normally, we don't handle that, I mean, I, they're looking for direction, they've given us the pictures, it's up to the commission to decide, um, you know, what the direction for the staff would be, and what I'm hearing is that people just want it completed, um, we're happy to give him a C O as long as he gets the job done, so let's get the job done, let's get the C O, and then everybody will be happy. And that's, that's my take on it, so, anyone else from the commission have something different that they'd like to add, or is there any other comment from the commission, or commissioners? So I think you guys have your direction, I mean, he's done some good work, and I, I'm happy, I'm happy to see it, but we just need to finish it so we can finish the project and give it the C O. So we'll go with that, okay?
Can I make one other comment for the record, because I want it established, it's been stated a number of times, but this use of the garage that has, had been greedy, and I believe it was discussed at the last me, at the special meeting as well, um, there is no authorized use of that building, most of this debris goes with the, um, occupant of that building who has not come in for zoning approval, and has been notified and told he needs, you know, if they're going to be using that, utilizing that buil, building for any purpose, that, um, zoning approval needs to be had for the use of the building, because the gravy use cannot continue.
So all this stuff isn't the applicant stuff, it's a tenant in the building?
It, yes.
Sorry, Tom?
Yes, and, or a good portion of it, there are some that it is not, but there is some that is, and we are working on procedures.
Probes for that building were supplanted, but.
Yes.
It's like, uh, antique, uh.
Right.
Rush direction, uh, facility, uh, antique or classic car reservation facility, uh, that is not.
And his license, and, and regardless, that license does not transfer to any new owner, so that's why the building has no use, any use has to come in, because another motor vehicle use would have to get approval, because the, the approval doesn't carry from one motor vehicle use to the next, and two, because if it's not that use, then it's a change of use, and a change of use has to come into, to the commission, so that's why they were instructed of that, and I want it on the record that they were instructed of that.
Yeah, well, then, then, then unfortunately, the applicant's gotta get that tenant going and get his toys and stuff out there. That's basically where all this accumulation of votes and all that stuff is from, yeah, the applicant's tenant.
Um, on the, on the site visit, we were told that there was a skid steer around back that was his, that is parts, he uses it for parts, so it should not be there either, but it is something they actively use, um, I understood on the construction site when something isn't working right, um, the rest of the site, the new building looked good. Um, and the demolition debris was coming off from where they had knocked out the house, where they're doing that.
Because the building came up here.
They had a, a big dumpster there, but there was a considerable amount, uh, well, you can see the pictures, what's left this afternoon.
Not whole, because you're combining properties, that the whole property should look the same, uh, you did a nice job on the building, the rest of it looks nice.
Alright.
Thank you.
So, staff, that's what needs.
I, I do, I knew it, you know, they, and they asked for the, they asked us to bring it in.
Alright, no, and I, I appreciate that. Okay, it's, uh, nine forty-six, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Wolman, do we have a second?
I'm sorry, we need.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Miller, all those in favor, aye. Goodnight, everybody, thank you.
Night. Night.
Night, everyone.
Tim.
Uh, hold on.